This conference will now be recorded.
I will call the regular council meeting of Monday, March 3rd to order. Anna, I did. Go ahead, Anna.
Councilmember Carrier?
Here.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
And Mayor Protem Walchut?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of our justice, law, and
I'll entertain the motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Move.
So, motion by Mitchell, second by Mayor Protem to approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? Anna.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Walchut?
Aye.
So I have two modifications to the agenda this evening, so we'll make a motion one at a time. My first modification to the agenda is to add a project-based learning to Section 8, Presentation under C, it will be number four. That's my motion.
I second.
Supported by Mayor Protem. Any discussion? Anna? Okay.
It's called project-based learning? So you know how it works on page?
Birdsong Bay. Did I not say Birdsong Bay?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's, that's presentation number four. I apologize.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Walchut?
Aye.
And Councilmember Carrier? Motion, period.
We have a full room tonight, so I am going to move the wholesome technical rescue incident recognition to Presentation 8A and move American with Disability Act to 8B.
I second.
My motion, support by Mayor Protem. Any discussion? Anna.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Walchut?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
And Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
Motion, period.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of regular session, February 17th, 2025. Any additions or corrections?
Yes.
They will stand as printed. We're down to five. Public comment, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed, and all comments should be directed to the council. So is there anyone who would like to speak to us?
Is this in lieu of the public comment that's in the, in Item 6, the public hearing?
No, and the only exception to public comment, and you can still make it during open public comment, is I do have a public comment on the public hearing for the Corridor Improvement Authority. Any other questions, comments? Anyone online, Steve? So now we're down to six, public hearing, Corridor Improvement Authority Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan. Bob Storn, Storn is in the audience and Mac is on line. Rachel? Who presents?
Officially open the public hearing.
Opening the public hearing. Thank you, Anna.
So I do have a memo in the packet, and we have Mac McClellan, who's going to do a brief presentation, but just a couple things to point out. So we're here for the public hearing for the development area and TIF plan, I'm sorry, the development agreement and TIF plan. We did appoint authority members on February 3rd, 2025. We also, just a little bit about the development area, it's located in the northern portion of the city, generally known as the US 23 North property for the city. Tax capture for this will be limited to the property acquired by the Gardens Alpina, of Alpina, for the development of the senior living center. Excuse me. So that property is the only area of tax capture within that, the CIA, the Corridor Improvement Authority boundary, and that is just under 10 acres. Local taxing jurisdictions subject to capture, the city of Alpina, Alpina County, Alpina Community College, and the Alpina County George N. Fletcher Library, the Alpina Mount Mercy Alcona Education Service District, and the school operating and state education tax, and Alpina Public School debt millage are not subject to this capture. Let's say 90% of the applicable future tax increment revenues will be captured and 10% allocated to the local taxing jurisdictions. Excuse me. For a period a maximum of 20 years. So with that, I am going to hand this over to Mac McClellan, who will do a brief presentations and then go over our request and resolution.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Mac McClellan, the consultant for the Corridor Improvement Authority, and excited to talk with you tonight and give you another presentation about the Corridor Improvement Authority. Going to go back through, as Rachel mentioned, just a little bit of the history and then talk about the development plan and TIF plan, which is kind of the mechanism for the, for the Corridor Improvement Authority. Can everybody see that slide, okay? Advancing. Again, just want to kind of summarize the key elements of where we're at today, talk about the Improvement Authority quickly, the district, and then that development plan and tax increment financing plan as well, and then the process that led us to here today. So in summary, the Gardens of Alpina acquired about 10 acres, or approximately 10 acres of property in this district, or in this area, for independent living and assisted living and memory care facility with an estimated investment of over $47 million, a significant investment, certainly. The challenge is for the project is that increased construction costs and interest rates really represent a significant financial challenge, and the project couldn't be built without some sort of community financial support, in this case, in the form of property tax relief here. The City Council created and appointed the authority and set the development area to provide the capture for increased incremental taxes, and we're only talking about the increase in incremental taxes there, to reimburse expenses that are included within the development plan and the TIF plan as well. The plan has been prepared and approved by the authority, by the Corridor Improvement Authority, and recommended for City Council approval tonight after the public hearing. Alpina County, Alpina Community College, and the library all have supported the project and the plans with specific resolutions or approvals of agreements as well, and this public hearing was duly noticed in accordance with the Act to provide the opportunity for interested parties to provide input. The resolution is presented for the council again after the public hearing. So the Corridor Improvement Authority, back in October, excuse me, the City Council, back in October, approved a notice of intent for the authority and outlined the development area. A public hearing was held on December 3rd for that public hearing, after an extensive notification process that includes publication in the paper, posting of the notice in 20 conspicuous places in the development area, and to all the taxing jurisdictions and property owners. The council created and appointed the authority and established a development area on February 3rd. Most of the public, it's mostly public property east of US 23 North in the northern portion. It includes Community College, ESD, and Alpina Public Schools property. This is the boundary of the outline predominantly, the, again, the City College and ESD property, Community College and, excuse me, again, ESD property. There are, there is one taxable parcel on the property, and there are two non-taxable parcels on the property, within the district as well. So again, as Rachel said, development activities and tax capture are just going to be limited to the Gardens of Alpina property, so the 10-acre parcel that has been acquired by the Gardens will be the only area of tax capture unless amendment to the development plan and TIF plan is proposed at some future date, and we'll go through this process. And again, the City County College and Library taxes are the taxes that are subject to capture. There's two components that kind of combine together, the development plan and the TIF plan, kind of a historic structure from the old DDA days. The development plan describes the district, details the improvements in the cost, and outlines the arrangements and processes for managing that. The tax increment financing plan details the tax capture procedure, estimates the impact of that tax increment financing, and then states the portion of the TIF capture, which as Rachel said, is just limited to the Gardens property. The 90%, 90% of those increased incremental taxes will be captured for the development, and the 10% will go back to the taxing jurisdictions. After that 20-year period is end, all of the taxes will go back to the taxing jurisdictions. Again, the authority approved the, the plan on February 18th. The hearing is tonight, and your consideration of the resolution is tonight. As Rachel mentioned, this is the total tax bill for non-homesteads. The taxes are subject to capture, City Library, County, and Community College, the ESD, the school debt, school operating tax, school operating tax and the state education tax are not subject to capture in this case. So all the taxes generated for those taxing jurisdictions will be based on the full taxable value, will be a significant amount. In the Act, it requires, or provides the opportunity for governing bodies of taxing jurisdictions that are subject to capture to adopt a resolution exempting their capture within 60 days of the development in TIF plan. And kind of uniquely, the library board must actually approve the TIF capture with an agreement, with a written agreement. And the challenge for us was that the project is really ready to begin, and that 60-day period, so it would have been approved tonight, March 3rd, they would have had 60 days from today, so in early May would have the right to pass that, that, we'd have to be waiting until that point in time. So what we did was ask that there is a resolution of concurrence and a waiver of exemption from the county and the Community College. The county board approved that resolution on January 28th, and the Community College Board approved the resolution on February 20th. Again, there's, there's a unique piece with libraries that they have to actually approve an agreement. We prepared and drafted an interlocal agreement between the library and the authority. The authority approved that on February 11th, and the library board approved the agreement on February 19th. So with this action tonight, the project is ready to proceed. There is one more step, and that's a development agreement between the Gardens of Alpina and the Corridor Improvement Authority. It really details the roles and responsibilities, the financial arrangements, reimbursement procedures, and authority protections in that case, and essentially says that if the Gardens of Alpina builds the facility, the authority will capture any of those taxes that are generated to cover a portion of the development cost. There is no obligation on the part of the authority or the city if the taxes don't reach a certain level or if the project does not proceed for some reason. And then again, reimbursement is only limited to that tax capture generated by the Gardens of Alpina. I take, joke to say, take 17 pages to say that, but that's essentially what the, what the development agreement says. So the schedule they've gone through, again, just briefly, you know, from the resolution of November 21st, all the notices, the public hearing, and approving the resolutions of concurrence and waiver by the county board, and, and the college, the establishment of the, of the board as well, and the approval of the, the plan by the CIA, by the Corridor Improvement Authority on February 19th, and the tonight consideration of the development in TIF plan. Again, our last remaining step will be approval of that development agreement, which we anticipate sometime in April. So the request tonight, after the public hearing is closed, after public comment is received and the public hearing is closed, is to adopt the resolution approving the US 23 Corridor Improvement Authority Development Plan and Tax Improvement Financing Plan, subject to final approval as to content by the city manager and as to form by Authority Council. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mac, why don't you just hang on, and maybe council will have questions when we get to that point. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to open public comment. So anyone speaking in favor of the project first to the podium, and I'll take online comments after. Anyone in favor of this first? No? Against this proposal? Anyone against this proposal can come up to the podium and speak.
Hello, my name is Michael Kramer. I'm a resident of Alpina, and I'd like to speak in opposition to the Gardens of Alpina project for one main reason. I do understand that these types of projects require an abatement many times by the taxing authorities, and that is definitely a consideration that you have to consider in this project. But we are subsidizing a competition, a project that's going to be competition for the two world-class senior housing developments we have in this city already, Turning Brook and Besse. And at last week, those facilities have six-month waiting lists, but last week there were two units available at Besse, and if I, and I've been told if I get on the list at Turning Brook, I will have a unit before six months because people get called up on the waiting list and they're not ready to do anything. And so therefore, those units become available. We also have Bingham School, which is a beautiful development, I toured that, that's coming online this year, and there's 38 beds or 37 beds there, and they, those are rental units that are income subsidized, but they will be challenged to some degree by this further development. Plus, we also have Pace moving into the old store down south of town, which is an organization that helps seniors stay in their homes and provides services in the facility where the seniors can go there and be taken care of, laundry, physical therapy, nurses, and they also go to the home to help keep seniors stay in their home. Now, I don't know how many seniors can afford $5,000 a month for a 290-square-foot living quarters, but that's pretty steep, and we're, we're going to find out that many of the seniors that come to these places come from downstate because their families live up here, which is a wonderful thing. I'm not saying that that's bad, but these facilities are not rolling in dough, and they do not have a backlog that's not being eaten up by the normal flow of things in this town. If we bring another facility in and subsidize it, in essence, like you have to do to get these facilities, it doesn't make any sense in the prospect that it would injure the businesses that are already here. So we also have 10 or 12 independent homes that have up to nine beds in town. Those are all licensed by the state. So I just think this is a waste of city property and not a good use of the abatements that come with this. There's got to be, if we, if we're coming to an economic time when developers don't want to develop that property, fine, take a breath, relax, it'll come back, and we'll be able to make money on that property that makes sense for this town, i.e. housing. So anyway, that's my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yoma. Anyone else wishing to speak against in the audience? So if there's no one else, oh, go ahead.
My name is Holler, and I live here in Alpina. I'm a retired nurse, spent a long time working, and my concern is that the Gardens does not have any Medicare or Medicaid reimbursement. I haven't heard anything about RNs or licensed staff working there, and that's my concern. I could go on and tell you some of the things I've seen by even some two-week-trained nurse aides, or, you know, I don't know. It, it concerns me that they're not going to have any Medicare/Medicaid reimbursement, and they're not going to have professional staff. I don't know what the numbers should be. I've been retired for a while, but that is my concern in terms of the care of the residents because anybody who puts their family member in a nursing home away from home is a huge decision and a difficult one. So thank you.
Anyone else? If there's no one else, I'm going to close public comments. Anna, were there any written requests received?
None received.
Council discussion? Anyone have questions of Mac? Any comments? Discussion? I do not either, so I'm going to close that, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 2025-03, Resolution to approve US 23 North Corridor Improvement Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan.
Can you, just one second. Can you read the rest of that motion? Okay, can I, can I add to it?
Please.
It's not on your screen. So the motion is actually to adopt Resolution Number 2025-3 to approve the US 23 North Corridor Improvement Authority Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan, subject to the approval as to the content by the city manager and as to form by the Authority Council. That is the motion.
You agree to that?
I agree with that.
Because you're the motion maker.
Yeah, I just don't know where she read it from.
It's on the memo.
It's on the bottom of the memo. Page 6.
Moving at the resolutions. All that.
You got it?
Oh, I do.
Go to the bottom.
Well, I have, okay, I got you.
Okay, studies? And agreeing on?
I'm agreeing.
Okay.
Are you sure? Okay.
And Mayor Protem Walchut seconded it?
And so the motion is, as, and I'll just repeat it, is to adopt Resolution Number 2025-03 to approve the US 23 North Corridor Improvement Authority Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan, subject to the approval as to the content by the city manager and as to form by the Authority Council. Any discussion? No, no discussion, Anna?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Walchut?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you, Anna. So we are to the consent agenda, I will read this. Are you okay?
Yes. Would the last person, the last vote, would he be the person we would talk to for questions for follow-up?
No. No.
Okay.
Did you have questions of me?
Not regarding my vote, but just follow-ups. Just, just any questions?
So Kevin had a question for Mac.
Just if, if I have questions that arise after this, would I direct them to? Perfect, thank you. Thank you, sorry about that.
No, that's okay, Kevin. Consent agenda, bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,624,090.13, and authorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soy to sign the warrant. Mayoral appointment of Julie Gandula to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring March 1st, 2028, and C is approval of a cemetery deed, number 0321, by and between the city of Alpina and Tammy Donikowski, in the amount of $2,235 per block 40, lots 148 and 149, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, and authorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soy to sign said deed. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion to accept the, to, to accept the consent agenda by Mayor Protem. I'll check, second by Hollinshead.
Mayor Protem Walchut?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion, period.
We're down to presentations, and I flipped a couple of these presentations because we have lots of people and lots of kids in the room waiting patiently. So our first one is the wholesome technical rescue incident recognition, and we have Fire Chief Rob Edmonds. And we have Andy Marso.
Glad I don't like big crowds. Thank you, everybody for showing up. No pressure there. First of all, I want to do just a real quick overview of what the wholesome incident was. We got dispatched on January 27th, about three minutes to midnight for a bulldozer rollover. Not necessarily a classic rollover as we anticipated or what we're used to. When they got there, go ahead and go to the next slide. When they got there, was that the wholesome plant? I was actually corrected, the, the operator was actually 35 years old, not 45. The dispatch information was a little bit wrong, and that's what we went off from. It was a male operator, he was conscious, they had radio communications with him, they knew he was just bruised up, banged up a little bit. His name is Daniel Tucker, and he's here tonight with his family. So at the conclusion, he'll come up, and so you guys can see why we really do this. It was a cold day, it was 22 degrees Fahrenheit, wind was out of the northwest at 18 to 29 miles per hour, and there were snow squalls. To say it was cold is an understatement. With the wind chill, it was between 4 and 7 degrees Fahrenheit that night. So, next slide. So the incident location was actually what they call their main crusher, the primary crusher pile, and what it is, it's about a quarter mile inside the plant, and it's where the stone comes to for, basically for finish grinding, going through the machining process. So it's a little bit difficult to get to. Next slide. So the incident view, just to give you guys a little bit of an overview, that's what the crews actually saw from the top of the elevator, which I'll show you where that's at in the conveyor. Now that bulldozer, what I was told, is literally 12 feet wide, so that looks very tiny, 150 feet up in the air. We figured we were about 150 feet. He was about 75 to 80 feet down in the hole. There was no good way to get there. Top of the pile, the way the material goes through, it was basically a funnel, it was very narrow to get in. Fortunately, when he went in, he went blade down, and it didn't flip. Then it would have been a whole nother set of circumstances for us. Something to keep in mind, our nearest rescue team, aside from CRTC and ourselves, is about four hours away, so it's not a quick fix to get anybody to give us any extra help. But that's the view from the top of the conveyor belt, where they actually set up rigging system to actually get Daniel out. Next slide. So once we got there, basically, we set up a command made up of Alpina City Fire Department personnel, myself, Tyler Shusak, who's the captain, and Deputy Chief Andy Marso, who was our safety person assigned to the incident, and he was our scribe, basically to keep track of times and that type of stuff. CRTC Fire Department Captain Kamishki, he actually headed up their command structure to help make decisions as we went. So obviously, this is a bigger event, and it took more than, more than one set of, of eyes and thoughts on this. Jeff Scott, who's here today from the plant itself, he is the plant manager, and Dave Scott, who is in the back, he's actually the plant safety. They were both involved in decision-making as we went along the way. And then accountability, we had paramedic firefighter Dean Revard took care of accountability because we did have a large amount of people, and it was a pretty complex operation. Next slide. So just some of the rescue details, just so you guys get a little bit of a grasp on it. Our total rescue time was four hours and seven minutes from the time that we got requested until the time everybody cleared. Once we made the decision to go and get Daniel with a rigging system, a haul and lower system on ropes, it literally only took us 58 minutes to go down, get him, and getting back up to safety where he could get transported. So that part of it actually went really smooth. The big thing is, it's very complex, and so safety had to be a primary concern, and that was our thing. We did have three different options. One was take the pile apart with bulldozers, which we didn't know how that was going to go, and there was a risk of stability of the pile because we were told it was a very unstable pile. Their thing was a crane, 135-foot crane with a man basket on it to lower somebody down to pull them out. The problem was the crane was too short. Our ladder truck was too short, it was extended out to the 95 feet, and we still were about 30 feet from the top of the pile. So we really only had one option. So, again, 58 minutes from the time we actually made the decision to lower a rescuer down until the time we actually had him back up on, on solid ground. So, next slide. We had 18 total personnel, which you, you guys can all read that, we had our full shift personnel that was on for the day, there was eight of us, then there was administrative staff of myself and Andy Marso. CRTC Fire Department, when they were requested, thankfully, they didn't have planes in, they could send us four They could send us four people, which they did. Captain Chad Kamishki, firefighter/paramedic Chris Wilson, firefighter/EMT Justin Weddington, and firefighter/medical first responder Corey Cullen. With that, we also had wholesome personnel that assisted. Basically, they were a lot of help hauling stuff up to the top. It was quite a stretch to get up there. So, they hauled equipment for us. They hauled rope for us. And they actually helped us when we actually did the hauling because, again, you're pulling two human bodies, probably looking at about probably 400 pounds. So, the system they used, they needed all the hands that they could. Michael McEwen, Cash Wortley, Jody White, and Jared Campbell were all wholesome employees that actually helped with the rescue. So, next slide. So, the rope team that actually did the rigging, the rigging crew was Wilson, Weddington, Cullen. They're from CRTC Air Base. And then Bolonowski, Jimmy, you want to stand up? I'm going to pick out Jimmy here for a minute. So, we found the smallest, lightest guy that we could to go down for a reason. Okay, he's not an anchor point for us. He's somebody, he's been through the rope rescue classes, and I think he was willing to go. Yeah? So, Jimmy did a great job with it. So, we had Mr. Babcock from our City Fire Department, and then the bottom four, McEwen, White, Wortley, and Campbell, were basically there for anything that we needed. We needed runners. They were able to do it. We needed muscle. They were able to pull. So, next slide. Just to give you a little view from the bottom of the pile, that aerial truck is extended completely as far as it'll go, and it still does not reach the top. There's probably another 30 feet just to the edge of the piling. Where you see the light there just above the tower, that's actually where they had the rigging system so that they could actually do the raising and lowering of the rescuer and the victim. So, gives you kind of an idea. That pile was quite unstable. They were a little nervous when we stepped off the tower truck to help the rescuer and the victim out just because it is an unstable pile. So, next slide. Give you another little bit of an idea. That's more near the top where you can actually see the top of the hole where they were at, where Danny and Jimmy are actually dangling in the middle. That is still about 30 feet from the end of the piling, where we had to pull him into to get him to safety, to get him down the rest of the way. So, again, you've got to remember, it's 4 to 7 degrees out, so it's very cold. So, Jimmy and Danny will both tell you that it was warmer inside the hole than it was when we got it out because of the wind. So, next slide. And again, there's the top of the pile looking down. So, again, it gives you just a little bit of a perspective as to how far up he was. 150 feet doesn't seem like a lot, but probably from the top of the conveyor all the way down, it's a pretty good distance. So, obviously, safety is paramount, and it's primary, and that's why we do this. So, none of these decisions were very quick. So, is that the last one? Yep. Okay. So... Thank you. Tonight, it's... Oh, where am I at? I got two minutes? Oh, man. Lose this one. Tonight, it's my honor and privilege to recognize personnel involved in the technical rescue involving a high-angle rope team that successfully brought machine operator Daniel Tucker to safety. Daniel, back there? Have him come up front with his family, please. They didn't know that they were going to be on the spot. But it's important for everybody to understand, this is the success we look for on every call that we go for so he can go home to his wife and kids. So... Come on, right up here, Daniel. Andy will even help with the kids. In my 29-year career at the Alpine City Fire Department, this is the first time our expertise was needed for a high-angle rescue evolution for victim removal. This type of rescue operation is very dangerous and has inherent risks that scene commanders must consider before committing their team to task. On the evening of January 27, 2025, at approximately 11:57 PM, the Alpine City Fire Department was requested at the wholesome plant for a bulldozer rollover. What they would be faced with was not anything they could have prepared for upon dispatch information, as this was no ordinary rollover. Upon the arrival of the first crew and shift commander, it was determined that more resources would be needed. The rollover was actually a large bulldozer that was pushing material at the primary crusher near the top of the pile when it slid to the bottom of a cone-shaped hole where material is drawn into the conveyor system for further processing. The operator and machine were approximately 80 feet down in the bottom of the pile and no easy way to gain access. We were told the operator was banged up with only minor injuries. Radio contact had been established with him. Captain Shusak immediately requested the Alpine Combat Ready and Training Center Fire Department for a technical rescue team assistance. A full shift deployment from our station with the aerial platform truck and our technical rescue trailer were deployed due to the nature of the incident. An initial sign size-up was completed with wholesome plant personnel, and some options were considered for rescue efforts. CRTC Fire Department personnel arrived, and a unified incident plan was established. The first option considered was to utilize 130-foot cable crane with a man basket that would elevate a crew into the hole and allow for access to the operator and removal from the machine. The second option was to set up a rope system of rigging for anchor points, a belay line, a lowering and lifting system to facilitate a rescuer to access the victim from an elevated conveyor system above the machine location. This was approximately 150 feet above the machine. Once it was determined the cable crane was not a viable option, an assigned rope team was already in motion and setting up for a high-angle rescue attempt. This rescue team was comprised of wholesome plant employees and assisted in equipment positioning at the top of the conveyor system, while Alpine CRTC Fire Department crews and Alpine City Fire Department crews set up rigging and performed the rope rescue operations safely and efficiently. The aerial platform truck was positioned as close to the pile as possible to assist in the final descent to safety for ambulance transport to Miami Michigan Medical Center. Through collaborative efforts with wholesome, Alpine CRTC, and the Alpine City Fire Department, this difficult task was executed smoothly and purposefully. We appreciate partnerships with these organizations to better serve the community in situations like this. At this time, I would like to ask the following personnel to come forward for recognition of their contribution to the success of this operation and the safe rescue of Daniel Tucker from the situation. Alpine CRTC Fire Department Captain Chad Kamishki. Chris Wilson.
Stand right here. With my hand. No.
Justin Weddington. And Corey Cullen. Yeah, you can stand right up there. There's 18 people here, you guys. It's going to take us a couple of minutes.
I've got a couple of the table there, so I guess...
Wholesome employees, I need Michael McEwen, Cash Wortley, Cody White, and Jared Campbell.
You're good.
We're so proud of you.
Yes.
Stand by them.
Go stand by them. From the Alpine City Fire Department is Captain Tyler Shusak, Lieutenant Andy Williams, who could not be here tonight, firefighter/paramedic Dean Revard, firefighter/paramedic Phil Curly, firefighter/paramedic Ryan Wright, also could not be here tonight, firefighter/paramedic Jim Bolonowski, firefighter/EMT Lee Babcock, is he here tonight? Firefighter/EMT Adam McNeil, and Deputy Chief Andy Marso. As you can see, this is not something that is done by just one or two people. This is a whole team of people. This also doesn't include the wholesome employees that were available if we needed them top of Alpine City Fire Department staffing station for other calls, as well as Miami Michigan Medical Center. We need them as mutual aid when we have larger situations like this. So, this rescue alone took 18 people. So, it's not a quick fix, but we're glad that we're able to provide the service while you return home to your family. Oh, yeah. Before we conclude this ceremony, I have a special commendation for Chief Rob Edmonds. Before we conclude this life-saving citation ceremony, I would like to take a moment to present a very special commendation. Chief Rob Edmonds has demonstrated unwavering dedication, exceptional leadership, and a deep commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. His efforts extend yet far beyond the call of duty, ensuring that those in need receive the highest level of care and protection. His passion for service, mentorship, and professionalism has left a lasting impact on those who serve alongside him. Whether responding to emergencies, guiding the next generation of firefighters, or strengthening the bond between our department and the community, Chief Edmonds explains the very best of our profession. Tonight, we recognize Chief Edmonds not only for his leadership and dedication, but also for his critical role in the high-angle rescue at wholesome on January 27, 2025. His experience, decisions, actions, and commitment to excellence were instrumental in the safe and efficient completion of this complex operation. Through his guidance and coordination, emergency responders performed their duties with precision, professionalism, ensuring a successful outcome. His steadfast devotion to the safety of both responders and the community reflects the highest standard of the fire service. On behalf of the Alpine City Fire Department and the citizens we serve, we extend our deepest gratitude for his outstanding service and life-saving efforts. It was with great honor that we present this special commendation as a token of our appreciation and respect. Please join me in congratulating our chief, Rob Edmonds.
Just... Recognize Jeff Scott and...
Yes, Jeff Scott.
Without their assistance and help onsite, they were instrumental.
Not only onsite, Mayor, they helped sponsor a rope rescue class. They attended some...
I was going to say that. Yes.
They have helped the community in a large part.
Thank you.
Mayor, not to mention, just, oh, thank you, guys. It's a wonderful team, right? It's quite helpful for me. I'm in charge of all these guys. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Get out there.
Thank you, too.
Okay, so we will continue on with our agenda as they move out. So, we are moving... But most of the noise is coming from outside. Okay. So, let's continue. We're going to, under Presentations, we have the American with Disability Act Assessment Update, and we have Montiel Birmingham from our Planning, Development, and Zoning Director. And we'll wait a couple of minutes before, or seconds before she starts so that the noise outside of the room can calm down.
It was one minute, please.
And I said that. So, we will just wait a minute. So, when Montiel starts speaking, everyone can hear. But we'll give them the time that they deserve to hug each other. It was a great rescue.
It's only taken that long. It's a finish.
Really?
Oh, you want to? Whenever you think it's calmed down enough that you want to...
Just going to jump in. I'll talk loud.
Okay, thank you very much for having me to talk about the recent assessment that we had for the Americans with Disabilities Act Assessment. So, the fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan included an ADA assessment of city parks, buildings, polling locations, and sections of the downtown. City staff partnered with Disability Network Northern Michigan for the assessment, as well as Amy Stevens, a local member of our community and advocate for those with varying abilities. Disability Network Northern Michigan and Ms. Stevens spent last summer and fall visiting specific locations throughout the city, identifying areas of opportunity. These findings were then included in reports for city staff to review. It is important to note, while reviewing the assessments from Disability Network Northern Michigan, that these reports do not identify areas of compliance, only areas of opportunity. Additionally, opportunities identified were given priority and ranked from high to low based on cost, safety threat, impact to the number of people, and financial impacts versus degree of access. Every finding refers to a section within the act for reference, along with a recommendation, priority, and photos where possible. Comments from Ms. Stevens were also provided, which highlights suggested improvements from a user's perspective. Below are examples of some of the most common findings within the reports. All reports will be available on the city's website and currently are available. Number one, van accessible stall issue, whether that be not present or not large enough, an ADA parking space or signage missing, an access aisle issue, meaning no access aisle present, access aisle not striped, or there's a protrusion into the access aisle. A vertical rise or slope issue, which could be things like slope at sidewalk curb is cut too steep, or there's a vertical step up. For example, the SciTech Park platform is an example in the reports. Number five, accessible picnic area or route issue. Accessible route issue to picnic area amenities like benches, picnic tables, trash cans, or grills, or the amenity is not accessible at all. For example, picnic tables, and we have photos of those. The path is not accessible, no path to sporting event fields, to water access, to playgrounds. Surface material issue, dock width, railing height, or not the shortest path of travel were a few of the examples. Number seven is a companion seating issue, where companion seating was not provided, and other, for example, projections within circulation paths, counter not accessible, entry door for six seated, bathroom fixture issue, or a playground equipment issue. The results of the assessment have provided the city with an opportunity to address accessibility with a thoughtful and planned approach, addressing current conditions, but also future project needs. The Capital Improvement Plan recently approved by the Planning Commission and City Council included funds to address public parking lot opportunities. Priority will be given to items based on the rankings included in the report and those that can be accomplished with the least amount of financial resources first. Please visit the Planning, Development, and Zoning website to see a list, a complete list of all reports, and a few examples are shown in the packet for reference with some explanations. So, I won't go through all of them. But if you have any questions about them, I'm happy to answer them. Like I noted, all of the reports are now available on the city website on the Planning, Development, and Zoning page, including photos, including the summary from Ms. Stevens, as well as a summary document, which kind of shows all of the findings by location in a quick summary, because there's just a lot of detail and information, which is excellent. Just a lot to go through. Any questions?
Do you have any questions from Montiel? I do. The bins, the garbage bins are not accessible. How can that be changed to make them accessible? Is there a special kind of bin?
Yeah, so one of the main issues with the bins that we currently have is the force to open them and the way that they have to be grasped. So, we would be looking at options as we replace bins to replace those with a more accessible type can, which could be from the side, from the front, less forced to open, for example.
Thank you, Montiel. It's a great report, lots of information, and we'll start working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Montiel. So now we are. We have four presentations this evening from Project Based Learning at Thunder Bay Junior High School. So our first presentation is going to be done by Fresh Air. So you tell me, did you bring your props? Did anyone bring? No props, that's okay. So if, if the group wants to, and Steve, you're going to. Okay, so if you tell Steve, want to go to the next slide, we will go to the next slide. But if Fresh Air Fitness can just come up here, and you can face the audience, because we can see you. Some of, a lot of it's obscene, that's, well, I shouldn't say that, two of us, three of us. But you can speak to the audience. Speak to the audience. And if you could just please introduce yourself first, and then we'll start from there.
My name is Michael.
My name is Emma.
My name is Brayden.
My name is Dan.
So imagine Alpena had a community space where people of all ages could gather together to get fit, have fun, and connect the nation. An outdoor gym in our local park. This project is more than about fitness. It's about having a healthy, more active lifestyle in our community.
Our idea is to, three, outdoor workout area next to the playground at Starlight Beach. In the following slides, we'll show you what you couldn't really like that, and why we didn't open it. Next slide. Our target audience is for any ages, but mostly adults. Next slide.
Obesity rates have skyrocketed over the past few years due to boredom, laziness, or unavailability to buy a gym membership. Well, with our idea, everybody will be able to have a gym membership and be able to go to the gym for free.
This idea will impact the city of Alpena by giving all ages, mostly adults, summer free to go work out when they're bored at home during the summer. And if the adult has a kid and they're bored at home, but their kid is bored and they have nothing to do, they can go play at the park while their parent works out and pitch free.
I would need two thousand square feet at Starlight Beach, like around the park. Excellent. We'd like to add a push bar.
And then next, all the equipment, we would like to have signs with photos on how to, step by step on how to use equipment, plus QR codes, which the QR codes are after, so if you would like to scan them, you can. And the QR code will show you exactly what to do and how to use the equipment. And then a balance beam for stability.
Little bars for upper body strength.
And tail bars, which also help with upper body strength. And finally, rope line. And then underneath health equipment, we would like to add rubber molds, because it's softer than most, so if you fall or it rains, you won't slip and fall, because it's allowed to grip for your attraction for your foot, and it's soft. You guys, the panel should consider our idea, because it'll get people free outdoor workout area to go to in the summer. If our idea gets approved, it'll attract more people to Starlight Beach. Next slide.
Obesity rate has skyrocketed over the past few years from thirty to forty-two percent, and studies show just fifteen minutes of light exercise per day can help reduce obesity and help lose weight. So again, this slide should accept our deal and help make Alpena a happier and happier community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The idea, you guys.
Good job, guys.
Courtney. 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 Can you come up and just maybe explain what? Got a little ahead of myself, and just explain what this.
I am Courtney Gagne, I am one of the project-based learning teachers at the junior high. I have a wonderful team of three other teachers that we, we co-teach with. And this project is one of our first projects in our projects-based learning, where we are learning about government and all of the stages that your voice goes through to get something, a bill, a law. And so they wanted to present to you some of their wonderful ideas as junior high students on things that they feel in Alpena that they would like to be improved. So they started with a letter from Mayor Johnson, and we as teachers don't give them much guidance. They have to go through all the process on their own and propose their idea. They then will present to their classmates, their classmates then vote, so they get their voice. To present to a panel of interested people, and we had Mayor Johnson and Carol Walcheck come, and a few other people in our, in our community. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And then you so graciously invited them to come in full circle and let them present to you as the city council and you wonderful audience members, and thank you for listening to them, because they put a lot of time and effort into these projects, and they're pretty amazing. So that, that is kind of the gist of this project, so I, again, thank you guys very much for this, so. And I do have, I'm gonna call them out, two of my co-teachers in the back that snuck in, so Angie Samp and Amy Carlson. And then our other co-teacher is Steve Port, but he's at the basketball game tonight. So our next group. Is.
Is the bike obstacle.
The bike obstacle course, so that group can come on up.
If you could just introduce yourself to the audience so they know. You can get, if you have a prop, you can get it.
They did not.
Okay.
Give them a direction.
Okay. Can you introduce yourself to everyone so they know?
So I'm Audrey.
I'm Patty.
And I'm Gemma.
Thank you.
And this is our bike obstacle course presentation. Oh, lack of slide. There you go.
As you can see in this video, there's a guy riding on a chair, and it's kind of boring and not so fun. So we're hoping with our idea of a bike obstacle course, it'll help solve thousands of riding on blind chairs.
So life is like. Okay, life is like riding a bicycle, to stay balanced, you must keep moving. And this is a bike obstacle course presentation. Bike. Okay, this video will show you many people. But. Okay, this video will show many people riding on main platforms that we would like to have for the obstacle course. These main platforms have netting around them, so if people would fall, they won't get injured by any way. And these main obstacle course. Can increase and decrease in size. So. Excellent. Next slide, please.
Our idea is a bike obstacle course for people and tourists of all ages. Some things we would like to have are hoes, laps, and jumps. And in the upper corner, you can see one of the platforms that could possibly, possibly be one of the main platforms. Next slide. Um, these also show more platforms that we want. The bottom portion shows the more safer platforms that may not need nothing around it, and could be for less advanced bikers. And the top portion shows the platforms that would be nothing around it, because they could be a little more dangerous, and could be for the more advanced bikers, but anyone can use any of them. Just, we also have a sign that says, "Ride at your own risk," because the age you walk, you get there.
So the space wanted is an open field at the duck park. We would like to have this field, because there's already a bike path going there, and it would attract bikers to the obstacle course to try it out. We would also like to use some of the grass area to have a trail leading to the obstacle course. But if this space isn't, if it's getting used for anything, we also think McCray Park could be good, because not a whole lot of people go there, but we think it could attract more people. And it has a lot of open area. Next slide.
One of our main benefits for this bike obstacle course is physical fitness. Next slide. Which, maybe have a better risk of not falling as much. Um, you could lose weight, which, as you could see, Alpena is a, like, light orange color, which is the second most on this obesity rate chart, which would like to decrease that. Next slide. It can make you a happier person. Excellent. Uh, physical fitness can also help with a better bone and muscle structure, which adds on to not falling as much. Excellent. Uh, physical fitness can also let you have a better life. Excellent. And also, you can have better sleep, which can make you a healthier person, too. Excellent. We think you should consider our idea, because Alpena doesn't have many things to have for bikes that are riding on trails, and it also has many benefits, like the ones I need just this week. Next slide.
If you guys were to consider using the space at the duck park for the open field, some people might say that the road is too busy and someone could get injured easily, but. Next slide, please.
We think we could build a small weigh-in fence that is loud enough to potentially stop bikers from going into the roads, that's still small enough, so other people can see the bike obstacle course. And also, it could potentially stop animals from going into the road, which could decrease the amount of animals that get hit by cars.
Some people that may, may say that this idea is a total waste of money. Excellent. But we think that this idea could improve Alpena a lot, because I know a lot of people of all ages that love riding bikes, and I think that they would really like this idea, because Alpena's pretty boring.
Pretty boring, just ride around town with your bike, but this will like have more to do with your bike.
Excellent.
Um, this photo shows a family of a mom and kids enjoying riding biking, and this proves that all ages can enjoy riding bikes, but we think to have more fun with the bike obstacle course.
And that's all.
Courtney, do you want to introduce the next group, or do you want me to do? Okay. Oh, okay, and just, I would like to thank all of the parents who support their children, because they're doing a fantastic job. So our next is number three, and it is Movies Under the Stars. If you could please introduce yourself, and then you know the group, direct Steve when you need your slide and folder.
Carter.
I'm Paige. I'm Brayden. And we're looking at homework Friday night in the summer with nothing to do.
We solved this problem with movie under the stars.
Excellent. Now we need people a way to depend on technology rather than being outdoors in the environment we live in. Make the best of both worlds with movie under the stars, you can watch movies you love while being outdoors.
Our idea is to create an outdoor movie theater at the band shelf, which is located in Bayview Park. People could come and enjoy a movie every other Friday at nine thirty PM, which is when the sun starts to set in summer. We would also have food trucks, come and sell their products, people enjoying the movie, and this would hopefully start Friday, June thirteenth, and would end Friday, September nineteenth. Next slide, please. This would impact the city of Alpena by giving people a chance to get together and have a fun and enjoy the movie night outside with family and friends. And in the summer, tourists can come and enjoy the beautiful outdoor Alpena whilst giving them something to remember. Next slide.
The location we chose is at the, the location we chose is at the band shelf, due to it already having the stage and the space in front of it for people to sit while enjoying the movies. We had a second location at Bayview, if the band shelf doesn't work, but at Bayview, it would be more expensive to run these events due to having to get more materials. The space you would need is all the space in front of the band shelf for people who are sitting and enjoying the movies, while having the stage with the projector and projector screen to, for us to put the movies on.
Next slide.
For the materials, the band shelf materials that are already there are speakers and a power supply, but the extra materials we plan on purchasing would be a projector, a screen, and lights. This would total out to around two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
The industries would like to have support us would be sanctuary cinema, small business food trucks, Alpena News, and the Vivero Industries.
The support we would need from these businesses is the Alpena News helping us advertise our movie nights so people know about them, while also having, we would hopefully like to partner with the National Junior Honor Society to help us pay down and set up the movie nights for volunteer hours.
If it's in bad weather, we postpone it for that night, if it's bad weather, we cancel it for that week. For bugs, the lights plan of purchasing should help propel most bugs. We hope that some of the bigger companies can help us, help us collaborate on this. We also plan on installing trash cans to help with extra litter. And for the seating, there's already seating out in front, we do not plan on providing any seating.
Excellent.
Why should consider, there should be a lot of outdoor fun for friends and family, people can get out and do what they love while being in the outdoors, and they can talk to the fam, family and friends.
We also had the idea to where we would be taking donations for any local charities to give money back to the community. We would also have themed nights, so like certain nights, there would be a certain theme where we put on a certain movie. Like one would be under the sea, and we'd play The Little Mermaid, or Moana, or any of those children's movies. We would also have a themed night for the weekend at Brown Chat, where we play a movie, like Finding Moonout, or on a show, to help bring in, or make the movies more enjoyable and something to look forward to. Thank you so much for your time.
We have one more, Birdsong Bay. This is about it, so I'm assuming, yes. So if you could introduce yourself to everyone.
I'm Glenn.
I'm Carter.
And I'm William. And this is our Birdsong Bay Park Plan. Our next. Uh, our location is going to be at the bottom corner of Birdsong Bay. We will have picnic tables, dirt parking lot and paths, a bird viewing and fishing platform, floating kayak launch, and like I said, it is going to be located at the bottom corner of the bay. Our next. Uh, this is a diagram showing the basic layout of the park. You have a picnic area, a kayak launch, and then the platform and the parking lot right off of this one, three.
The materials needed is three picnic tables, floating kayak launch, machine rental, concrete, wooden dock, five gallon buckets, four inch by four inch by eight foot posts, and an expanded pond with sixty-eight hundred dollars. Um, you guys might think it's a waste of money, there's enough activities out there. Adds activities, adds a place to walk, adds a place to fish, and adds a place to kayak. Adds activities, adds a place to walk, adds a place to fish and adds a place to kayak.
How does this impact the city? For donations, we'd be placing a donation, our donation box on either side of the bay to help preserve and keep, and upkeep the area needed. Tourism, this adds up, this adds places to Alpena as previously stated, and this would um likely bring people towards the bay. Nature, with the way our idea was designed, this would hardly impact the nature. It'd just create a fun place to go and fish and kayak. Improve town, I believe this improves the town because it glorifies our town's image. Next slide please.
Uh, issues is fixes. For fishing, adds more spots to fish on this end of town. For kayaking, it adds a spot to launch kayaks on this end of town or on the, that end of town. And then for bird viewing and nature, adds a spot to birdwatch and just walk around at Birdsong Bay.
Demographic. Our idea was designed to appeal to all age groups, but specifically or fishers, bird watchers and kayakers of Alpena. Organizations. We'd be asking the Rotary Club, uh workshop classes of A H S and Chamber of Commerce to execute our idea if approved.
That is my presentation.
Well, I'm encrossed again. Thank you. And Courtney, if there's any more kids that want to come, let us know. Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We need more to do.
Yes.
Okay, it's not like a ready labor force.
In a minute. So we're down to.
What was, what was the team associated with it last time?
Which one?
The teacher associate.
What we got now? Okay, so I'm going to read my announcements. We have one announcement. And the city is seeking an individual to fill a vacancy on the local officers' compensation committee for a six-year term. Okay, um, I'm not sure. So we are two eleven, um, report of officers, boards and committees. Um, A is, are you ready Bill? Second reading of ordinance twenty-five dash five oh five, which amends the city's of Alpena zoning map. Joe?
Uh, this is ordinance number twenty-five dash five oh five, consistent with council policy would not be read again unless one of the individual members wishes for me to be reading. This is relating to the property at two oh one West Oldfield. Montiel is here to answer any questions and there's also a public comment section for this.
Do you want to?
Sure. So um while I'm up here, I, I think I'll provide updates for two of the properties. Um, so there were some questions that came up from our last meeting. So I took some time and went back and did more research based on those questions. Um, so the first one is two twenty-six West Miller. I'll address that one first. Um, that one was the proposed duplex. The applicant um had proposed an efficiency unit. There was concern about there not being a complete oven stove. And after further discussion with the applicant, um, they have agreed to add that um to make it a complete unit, um, which was the only concern, I believe that was discussed. Um, I also did request from our building inspector a definition um for an efficiency unit in the building code. That does not exist. Um, it's just a dwelling unit in the building code. And that definition does state that it requires permanent provisions for cooking. So we will require that as um a requirement um prior to certifying the unit if you were to approve it. The second one was two oh one West Oldfield. I had an opportunity to visit the property this morning with the applicant, the building inspector, the building official and the electrical inspector, just based on the concerns that were brought up on that specific property. I requested the meeting to understand the facts about the current condition of the electrical system and the foundation, as well as to understand the building official's assessment on the condition of the structure. During the visit, we also discussed necessary parking improvements that the planning commission required um during their decision. After visiting the property and having these discussions, it is my recommendation that the council take the recommendation of the planning commission based on the conditional rezoning factors and agreed upon site upgrades for parking. Additionally, while the current condition of the electrical and building are not within the scope of the rezoning consideration, I have asked our building official, Don Gilmat, who's here, to share his evaluation of the property so that facts about the property can be clarified. Additionally, the applicant Kelly Prina is in attendance and would like an opportunity to address concerns that were cited as well. Um, I will lastly address the third property, um, which was Hope Shores Alliance, um, their request. Um, there were no follow-up items um from me specifically about the property itself. There was a question about the um incidents at the previous or the current location and those were um given to the person that had asked for that. Any questions I can answer?
I don't right now.
So I'll turn it over to Don.
Okay, yeah.
He just told me to come up here because he said as long as I'm staying next to her, he looks good already. Anyway, you all know me, Don Gilmat. Hi, Kevin. I went over and looked at stuff. Montiel went through the list last week with the, the concerns that council had and I get parking and all that, but actually that unit is in pretty good shape. Uh, the exterior, I mean, the, the, all the stairs that have a little bit of peeling paint, they're all treated wood. So there is, there's no issue with rod or anything like that. Mostly around the windows need to be scraped and painted, you know, to spruce it up uh when weather permits. The stone rubble foundation is in better shape than most of them around town. Like this one has a parking on the inside. So instead of, you know, you look on the outside, you see painted rocks. You look on the inside, you see rocks, you see flat. So we went through there, the electrical inspector and I, and evaluated the electrical. Uh, that, you know, because they're making three units and they want to have, you, you know, the unit needs to have its own disconnect in every unit. So that'll, that'll take care of uh any issues they find in the wire. And currently the place works. You know, it was a triplex to begin with whenever it started out. And probably the reason um it reverted back was when uh Mr. Grankovich owned it. When we started the rental inspection program in two thousand and one or two and I started kicking it off, Jeff Shea, your previous assessor, we had all these duplexes on the city property. So we called everybody because a lot of these people, you know, yep, at one time it was a triplex. Now we gave the opportunity to tell us, the government, that I'm not using it for permitted purpose anymore to get them, get them uh on a hundred percent on a homestead and stuff like that. So that's what reverted this property back to a single fam- family from what it had been used previously. When I walked through it today, it looks like you could just go ahead and use it like it was used previously. I mean, everything's there, you know, it hasn't been used, so some, some areas are dirty. But um as far as the separation between the dwelling units, um, I know Kelly's here and I, I showed her, there's a, there's a paint you can get that's a lot easier to achieve those separations than putting another half inch or five eights of drywall on either side. And I researched all that before I came here. So those, those products are available uh to use on the substrates that I saw. But good sized lot, plenty of parking, you know. I mean, I think it'll be, you know, look like it's going to be a two-bedroom and two-one bedrooms. It'll be some well-afforded housing for one bedrooms. You're not getting families in there, but you're going to have people working or whatever. And, and I mean, if you were inside the house, it, it's really in beautiful shape. I mean, it's, well, I don't want to say it's cooler in my house that I just built myself, but it is. It's got the old woodwork, it's got, you know, ships themed throughout this wooden stairway that goes upstairs in the two-bedroom unit. There's like the nightlight is like a little beacon thing on the newer post, you know, and it, it's been well-maintained. I don't know if you have specific questions that you want to ask me about any of this stuff or?
One of the things that came up was parking.
There's, there, the, it's a full lot. She knows she's going to have to put in some more parking space. I mean, there's a two-car garage that you couldn't really probably park in front of it, but you could pull in it. And then between the house and the garage, there's a ton of space to put a couple more parking spots in. She's aware that you, you know, the, between the sidewalk and the curb doesn't count.
Is that a stipulation you put in or anything?
I think that, that was already discussed by any commission meeting. They, they discuss all that. And so the other thing too is, you know, it's, it's going to cost you a couple bucks. I mean, let's face it. Um, before anybody moves in there, it, everything will be up to current code. It'll probably use the rehab code, but everything will be brought up to code. Parking will be addressed. All the issues will be addressed. Once it's in the program, then of course it's going to be inspected by the city rental inspector, Andrew. And you know, there'll be the complaint policy like we deal with all the rest of the rentals in town, so.
One concern were the number of letters that came from neighbors who were, you see, a triplex. Because that's a big number of cars and if these people have people visiting or relatives, what have you, there are more vehicles. Um, so.
Let me address that for you, Karen, once I've known you so long.
Okay.
Okay. We grew up together. Anyway, and I discussed that with Montiel. So that's, that, back, if you just left it a single family, which it is, that place would have a minimum of four bedrooms. So let me tell you about my house by yours over on Crapo Street. I had six kids. So we had three bedrooms, but you're going to have, you, you're not going to get families moving into those one bedrooms. It's either going to be a couple or it's going to be, and there's a ton of those type of units. They work real well for single men, single women. Um, Northern Michigan Mental Health rents a lot of them for their clients, you know, to get them on their own somewhere. So you're looking at a car. Then you get the family with two bedrooms, so maybe there's two cars. That's why there's room to do four. And we'll have all those discussions through the permitting process if approved. And Kelly sounds to me like she doesn't want to take, have issues with, with too many people parking. You know, if somebody comes over to visit, they park in the street, they park between the sidewalk. There's nothing we can do about that. But I don't think that this three unit, because it's so small, if it was three two-bedroom units or, you know, there was eight or nine bedrooms, then we'd be talking about an issue with cars. But there's so many triplexes over there already that it, we don't have an issue with parking. Sometimes the people don't even have a car. There's several on Miller Street and Oldfield Street has got them. Well, mostly on Miller. You know, block away, boom, there's at least, there's two of them on opposite sides of the street. There's a quadplex. That one actually has more of a parking lot, but. You know, and again, the inspectors down in the billing department, they're going to de- deal with any complaints as soon as they get them and, and work it through resolution. Because nobody wants to uh make people in the neighborhood upset. I get it, you know, people, they worry about things like that.
I'm just looking at the photos here and it looks like it's like some of the um units are quite outdated. And there's even a photo with just open insulation. Obviously that stuff has to be taken care of beforehand. But are there any other improvements that are going to be made?
Well, she'll have to, she'll actually have to do a whole lot of painting anyway. So you're, you're, you know, the usual stuff, painting, flooring. Um, we have to provide some type of a fire separation between those units. So that starts on the first floor, ceiling, floor assembly, between the two units downstairs. I mean, down in, in the place where you, where you were looking at insulation, that's got to be the spot in a closet I looked at where the roof, the roof must have leaked and they repaired it. I don't think Kelly did. I think, you know, whoever had the previous owner did because I could see new O S B. So that's all going to be buttoned up. That's got to be re-insulated, drywalled, paneled or something. But absolutely all that stuff. You, you can't have a hole this big in a, in a rental unit in Alpena.
Right.
When the inspector see it, you have to fix it.
Right. Okay.
So these will all be in pristine condition on day one in order to be able to be rented.
Right. And sorry, another question. Three separate electrical panels, three separate.
Well, there'll be, no, there will be three meters for now. So right now there's a two hundred amp service in the basement. So talking with Kelly, you know, myself and the electrical inspector, we explained that the tenants have to have access to their own electric panel. So on a suggestion, and, and they could still do what they want. But what they'll probably do is just put a sub-panel fifty amps in each. You know, the two bedroom might be a hundred and the other two will be fifty. And that's what's going to allow them to get um the circuit for the stove because there's, that's a heavy draw on an electric stove. And that way if it blows a breaker, it's right there in their unit. They don't have to go all the way down the basement or access that in the winter time or whatever. So. And she had talked about possibly putting in maybe even laundry in the basement and walling part of that off so that they don't have the whole basement. They just have access to a washer and dryer. If she goes that route, because I told her, if you got, a lot of times you've got access to whole basement, what we see in a few years is a whole basement full. That's just the way it is. But we hit that on rental inspections too and make, you know, get it cleaned up.
I guess I, I just wanted to follow up right. I, I have a duplex and I have to have separate water heaters and separate furnaces. Is that going to be the case?
What, what do you mean you have?
All furnaces so that.
You don't have to have, but if you don't have separate furnaces, I mean, you're paying the whole heat bill. Right. This one's going to have one furnace, I'm sure. It's not, it's because it's just not that big, you know.
It's going to control the heat?
You can set a furnace down and you can run uh multiple zones off of one four-stair furnace.
Okay, all right.
We've done, we've done that before because, and that's the thing, that's what's going to open up walls because you have to have ductwork. So I can't, you know, I'm in one-bedroom apartment number one and this one's in one-bedroom apartment number two. You're not sucking my nasty air into my, the furnace and then blowing it over to my own. So you gotta, you know, a lot of things get separated out.
With separate switches and so forth.
Well, they could, they can do the zones, which your thermostat will do yours. It's going to turn the whole furnace on every time you do it. But usually if, if it gets set up right, it'll be pretty much the same all over the place, you know, with the proper ductwork and return air.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Don.
And you want to talk about who's on?
Not.
Time, John.
So I'm going to open it up for public comment.
I, yeah, I, I, sorry, I wanted you to sit down so you can stand back. I'm sorry.
Want him to exercise.
Besides all the requirements, the safety precautions, everything that's obviously something that's been taken care of. Uh, but besides parking, uh, there's not a ton of triplexes. They live amongst us. People probably don't even know it.
Right.
Uh, but do you see a slippery slope if the building can handle it?
No.
Would there be any slippery slope for allowing triplexes?
Well, you know, I don't want to pick on areas, but I, there's a lot less triplexes in Alpena right now than there was when I started doing rental inspections because they feed. Because prior to the city enacting the, the policies, you know, there were just dumps. And the reason I was so involved in it is because I had six kids. And so I've seen them move into these neighborhoods. We had landlords that what they did is they swapped houses back and forth. They depreciated them for twenty years, they let them fall down themselves and they'd walk away. No investment. The city would get stuck tearing them down. That's why we had so many older decrepit places. Once we actually started doing rental inspections, it brought the value up. State of Michigan brought in tons of money over on the north side. You know, the uh single-family rental program, the duplexes, the downtown, that's all part of this rental inspection. And right now we need, we need places for people to stay, all kinds of people. Old people, young people, single people, workers. So anytime we can get a unit and make sure that it's going to be safe, but this is, it's a real solid house, Kevin. It's very solidly built. If you were speaking along the lines of loading or anything, there's no issues there. Um, it's just a, it's a plus for the neighborhood, you know. Because a lot of, you know, a lot of our single families, they, they're going to Airbnbs, you know. If my house, I'm going to sell in town. And you know, I, if I wanted to rent that as an Airbnb, I could make fifteen hundred bucks on a weekend or something, you know, but I'm not going to. I'm going to sell it to a family. But, but that's always a fear too is, so you gotta, you know, balance it out somehow.
Perfect. Thank you.
I want to address your question too in just a different way as well. So um in our zoning ordinance, we actually um do not allow the conversion of single, true single-family homes into triplexes. Um, the intent behind that is, was to ensure that our historic homes, that our single family do not physically get converted and ruin their historic character. Um, so that is currently in the zoning ordinance. This property is unique in that it has been this way and it's already set up like this. So that's why to me this one is unique. There's no physical conversion essentially that needs to be done. There's already three kitchens that have been there. There's already separation. So um I think that's what makes this one unique and addresses your question about proliferation of conversion because our ordinance doesn't actually allow that. Um, it does allow new construction, um, brand-new construction in that manner, but not. um, brand-new construction in that manner, but not conversion.
Do you have a marker for historic homes that noted as an historic home?
We don't, I mean, the intent behind that was to protect historic homes, um, but the ordinance just, you know, says it doesn't allow it, a, a full conversion of any single family.
Okay, I discretion that, okay.
How often are rental properties in town inspected?
Every three years they're required to be inspected, they would also be inspected if we were requested to inspect it by the owner or the tenant, depending on what concern.
Okay, like not a neighbor, because there were those letters of opposition, if a neighbor were to call in and say, hey.
Um, so, I mean, anyone can call in and make a complaint about something on the exterior, you know, something maybe with the sidewalk, or if, you know, there's shingles blowing off into their property or something to that effect, we would absolutely, you know, um, address their concern, but something from the interior would be different, because they wouldn't know.
There is one exception to that, and again, because I've dealt with it for so long. People do that all the time, and so you sit here, limited time, limited resources, limited money, what, you know, what do we address, so what I tell people when they call me, and it's probably because they were over there partying, and then they got in a pissing contest about something, and they're mad, so I'm gonna show you. So they call, I tell them, you know, they say, hey, you know, there's a big hole in the floor, or they had a fire in the kitchen, you know, and that place, you need to go shut that place down, I said, do you, do you rent it? Nope. Are you the owner? Nope, but it's okay, I'll tell you what, come with me. We'll go see the magistrate, and then we can swear out a warrant, and you have to attest that you saw it, I can't go and say you told me, so you come with, well, no, I don't wanna do that, okay, I'm sorry, I can't help you. So it's not like we just shut the door on it, because there, there could be a time come up when it, when it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
But that, that is one way to do it, through the administrative search warrant.
Okay.
But you gotta have firsthand knowledge of it, not, otherwise it's.
Right, right, just, yeah.
Sound about right, though?
It does. We've done a few of those, and we have, frankly, but it's happened a few times.
Thank God, that's a lot of work for you.
Thank you.
Going to open public comment on 201 West Oldfield. Um, so, Kelly.
Well, this is just a packet of information that I put together, and the, it kind of, a letter addressing all of the concerns that Montiel brought to my attention and, um, that kind of thing, so. Um, and I'll just touch base on some of it, and if you wanna, I mean, expand on it, you're certainly welcome to. Uh, so, um, some of the things that were brought to my attention, uh, property values will decrease as a result of allowing a multiple-family triplex in the neighborhood. So I did contact the city assessor's office, um, and they basically said that rentals in any of their ci- areas of the city, um, have no impact on property values. There's been no decline in property values in the city of Alpena over the past five to seven years, and he said relatively safe to de- to state that there's been no decline in the past 10 years. Um, the rental registration program has been in existence since approximately 2000. Uh, between 2013 and 2016, at least 10 rental properties were registered as duplexes or multifamily properties within a two-block radius of that property. So there's at least 10 within two blocks. Um, in addition, 20 single-family rentals registered within that two-block radius. So I say, why is this important? In researching the complaints that have been voiced, it appears that one individual purchased their home in 2022, one in 2020, one in 2012, uh, one that I couldn't find any indication that that person owned property within that area. So my point is, like, at least half of the individuals that have purchased property and complained about the potential for a rental, like, purchased property in an area that has well been established with rentals. Like, many of them there for 25-plus years, although when Montiel and I were looking through it, like, the actual recording system has only been present since 2013, um, the present recording system. So, um, I guess I feel like, I mean, this, like I said, the area has at least 30 rentals within a two-block radius, and if you're purchasing property in that area, I guess recognizing that rentals are there, and rentals, I'm not trying to set a precedence by bringing in a rental, I guess is what I'm saying. Um, increased fire risk in rentals, um, basically, so I, I spoke with the assistant fire chief. And, um, so I tried to follow up on all of the things that were, were brought to my attention. Um, basically, there's been significantly less fires in rentals um, attributed to the fact that rentals are inspected every three years. Um, any potential issues are addressed and corrected, there is no inspection pro- uh, process for homeowner-occupied homes. And so as a result, it makes more sense that there's gonna be less fires if you have something that's regularly inspected and addressed, right? Um, a few other interesting fire tidbits, on average, there are three to five fires in the city of Alpena each year, past year there was one rental fire, one homeowner-occupied, um, home fire, and the home actually belonged to a firefighter, and one arson, right, so certainly not an indication that way more fires in a rental, right? Um, electrical system, and I think Mr. Gilment spoke specifically to that. Um, they came, they inspected, they looked it over, what they went through, you know, everything, the, the panel, how it's attached to the house. What, whatever inspectors do, they did. New, no room for parking, I think, and addition, uh, that was addressed. So, uh, lots of additional space for parking, I did talk to the city engineer, or Montiel and I spoke with the city engineer um, regarding the driveway apron, you know, and how that fits in, and, um, how it fits into their expectations. Um, with no, um, problem with the additional parking space requirement. And I have a diagram and a picture in that little packet, um, that is kind of all drawn out. The garage is 22 by 24, which is actually a little bit larger than a standard, um, two-car garage. And the parking spaces in front of the garage, um, are, uh, it's 20 by 18, so you'd have parking spaces 10 by 18, which is actually a little bit larger than a standard parking spot as well. And there are, um, handouts in your packet, I just, I just printed off of like the standard parking spot, standard garage size, that kind of thing. Property hasn't been maintained. Um, was it, the next complaint, flower pots and landscape materials have been sitting around becoming an eyesore, um, tree roots growing through the foundation, those kinds of complaints. Uh, basically, we purchased this property the end of October 2024. So I, I certainly recognize that upkeep has been an issue, but it's been vacant for over six years, right? So I get it, and I don't, I want it to be nice, but you can't fix something that's not yours, and so I feel like some of the complaints were um, general and not based on something that, you know, we did to the property or didn't do, right, and I, I mean, I expect to have a decent property, like, I, I don't want it to be crappy either, right, I'd wanna live in a nice place. Um, let's see. I, like I said, they came in, there's no roots growing in the foundation, there's no roots growing through the basement. Um, kind of inaccurate, uh, like, I just don't want to leave here, or I don't want you to leave here with the perception that this is a crap, crappy place falling down, right? And I feel like that's kind of what's been portrayed to you in some ways, so that's why I went through this. Um, additional points to consider, and this was through, um, NMSKA and the Target Alpena report that came out a few months ago. Um, so according to NMSKA, there are currently 300 families in the coverage area, majority in Alpena, that currently qualify for services with funding available that are looking for houses. So if you, or housing, if each family, you consider even three people, right, that's 1,000 people looking for housing in Alpena, and we have a population of what, 10, 12,000? So that, like, almost 10%, and that's just NMSKA of our population looking for housing. That doesn't take into consideration any other housing assistance programs, or those that aren't connected with a specific agency. Um, the current need for housing in Alpena is significant, right, it's, I mean, we know that, right? So, um, I just have a little blurb there, that I did advertise a unit a few weeks ago. Um, first day I had 40-plus requests for additional information on people that were looking for a place to rent. Of those 40-plus, only five ask if I was willing to accept NMSKA or MISTHA or some other type of program. So basically what that tells me is that there's a lot of people out there looking that aren't associated with a specific housing assistance, um, program. So, according to a recent study, uh, Bowen National Research, and I believe that was commissioned by Target Alpena, um, there's a shortage of multifamily apartments in the Alpena area could potentially lead to, um, development opportunities in this community. So basically what I did with that is I printed off, and it's part of that little packet, it looks like this, and then highlighted the areas about multifamilies, um, units being at 100, um, occupant, 100% occupancy rate. Um, extreme, it says exceptionally high occupancy rate, indicative of a strong market for apartments of various affordability. Um, typically well-balanced, healthy markets have a housing rate vacancy of between 4 to 6%, obviously we don't have that, right, because there aren't enough really units available, kind of that meet these needs, so. Um, and like I said, that was commissioned by, in my, in my understa- my understanding, um, Target Alpena is who did that surgery, did that, um, uh, survey. Um, let's see, I think that's all, I mean, unless you have questions for me.
I don't have questions, but. I, I, I think, at first I wanted you to know that any perception of this being junky, or what, whatever the word, it, mostly it came from some comments made by people who were against having another rental in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
With absentee landlords, I think that was an issue, so that always raises red flags, and that we didn't think that.
Okay.
I didn't think that for sure. Um, and that you have the parking so well established is, it's really a step in the right direction, we do need housing, just very much in this city.
And I just, like I said, what I heard was like, like I said, that the foundation was caving in, because the roots were growing through, and you know what I mean, that kind of stuff, and so that's why I was like, like, I don't want that perception to be the, you know what I mean, the basis for a decision, but, you know, basically.
Right, um, yeah, thanks, you did a good job of, of showing what you plan to do, make it pretty.
Oh, yeah, like, decent, yeah, I, like I said, I don't, um, and then this is kind of the map that I went off of, and you can see all the colored areas are rentals, and so our place is the X, um, all of these areas are rentals. Yeah, yes, and so I took, um, went through like all of the rental, um, like, when they're registered, and just wrote in here, um, duplex in 2014, quadplex in 2016, quadplex in 2016, quadplex in 2014, triplex in 2015, just so that I had, like, a visual, right, to make it make sense, because except my goal isn't to just all of a sudden spring a rental on the neighborhood and have everybody angry about that. Like, it is well-established as a rental, you know, there are lots of rentals in that area, for sure. Any other questions?
If you'd be willing to take me through the property at some point.
Anytime, it's a beautiful house, it is, I, like, it, it's really, I, I mean, if I could move it to a farm, I would never get rid of it, like, it's just got, like you said, the old woodwork, it's just, you know, it's got like French doors dividing different area, it's just really a cool property. Yeah, so. Any other questions?
Yeah, just real quick, as the presumed landlord, correct? Um, would you be present and just make sure that the upkeep and that your tenants are, you know, upkeeping the property as they're supposed to?
Well, I live in Osneak, so it's not like, you know what I mean, like, I'm a, I'm gonna say a pretty present, I'm not in Alpena every day, but I'm in Alpena frequently.
To bowl and that.
Oh, yeah, so I have other rentals, and if something, so for example, um, I have a rental on Sabal Street, and, um, just this week, the, um, when it was so windy, it caught the screen door, ripped it off the thing, and I fixed it today, the guy that helps me with that kind of stuff, he fixed it today, like, we don't just let things, like, I don't wanna hang, a screen door hanging off the door, right, so, yeah, absolutely, we, I, I mean, address it, and if, again, if there is a neighbor complaint and it comes to me, it would be addressed immediately, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to close it for our discussion. So, I, and I just wanna make it clear, um, I'm not against the rental, I know we need housing. Um, my concern is, is the neighbors that don't want it. Um, so my compromise is, um, that instead of making it a triplex, is that we send it back to the planning commission um, to make it a duplex. I was over there today, I, I drove by, it's a cute house, you know, typical north side house. Um, there was, and I know there's a lot of property on the backside, and there is a two-car, and there is a two-car garage. But when I was there, because those houses are so close together, so from the side of the street where you see the garage, um, the next-door neighbors had three trucks parked up the side of the house, in front of the, the rental that is currently, there was a truck parked halfway on the snowbank, halfway in the street. And then on the side, I'm assuming it's your tenant, she parks in the curb. So if I look at that and, and think that, um, we're going to put three units in there, um, so you have the garage, so you think two cars on the garage, and then you would have to use part of the part of the yard, um, to put in more parking. Um, the person that lives across the street on that corner, they're gonna just look at cars everywhere. Um, and I think that's something that they don't want. I think a compromise is, 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 is R2, instead of, RT, I mean, instead of a triplex, that's, that's where our. Any other comments? In response to what you just said, I'd like to see it before and see what you're talking about, you know, it, how the cars, did anyone else go by?
I did not.
Oh, I did, do you have one?
Yeah.
Did the other one?
I did. I, I did drive by, that's why I wanna see the inside of it now, too. She said French doors, but, um, it is, it's hard to tell who will have cars and who will not, and I have a hard time basing on the unknown of that.
What if it's, and, and I understand that.
Yeah.
But if it's like full and everybody has two cars?
Hmm.
I'm not sure of that.
Even if it's a one-bedroom, that doesn't mean there isn't two cars, husband and wife work like this, boyfriend, girlfriend. She's looking at possibly six or more.
I mean, in the, this is just the Google image, in the one, the house across the street has a, uh, work trailer, a, another small something else, I think there's like stuff in the driveway, so I, I mean, I see driveways packed, I, that's what driveways are for, so for, for someone to say it's, there's too many cars when across the street it's completely filled with what you use driveways for, right?
But you're talking.
Yeah, was there any more public comment?
I've closed public comment.
You, you know, first chance to come up.
Oh, but I did, I opened it.
I didn't hear you say that, I'm sorry, I would have come right up there, you're the owner of the property, I'd let her know that we love rental, it's the density, and, and, and the concern with the cars, the concern with the paving of the backyard. Um, I've lived in an area that has been high rental before, and I know what the conditions can become. Um, but the aesthetic of the area is duplex and, and single home. Um, and to have the property bought at R2 with the expectation of it being a duplex, um, whoever was the property, um, um, purchaser would know that they would have that opportunity for R2 to have a duplex. It's a spot zoning, it, it doesn't belong right there in that little corner. Um, there are other areas, R2 is a residential zone, RM, which is what you're. RM, which is what you're looking to rezone, is a buffer zone where there is a higher density, maybe something between a commercial area and a residential area. And this is smacked out in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes.
Thank you. I jump in on this.
Last one. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Because I might have not heard you. Kevin Ginter, one fourteen East Wisner. I'd be remiss if I didn't stand up and, you know, continue to beat the drum for more housing, affordable housing, more opportunities in Alpena. Still's an issue. Got a couple people saying one thing and a couple people saying sort of the opposite, like, it's available, but there's still huge numbers that's saying people aren't getting the places to rent or move in, buy, what have you. Sometimes I think I hear, my opinion, is that we're going to legislate about what might happen. So I don't like my neighbor. Well, I don't hardly know my neighbors, I only lived there for three months. But I don't like the purple car they have in their driveway. So, oh, I'm concerned about, I'm being ridiculous, of course, but, like, there was an opportunity. You have a person who is all-in on making this thing acceptable, rentable in addition to the city. It's already been a triplex. It's already in an area that has quite a number of multi-unit. Seems to have established all the topics. Mr. Gilmet has talked about all the things that you guys had concerns about, rightly so, asking all the good questions about the heat and the stoves and the electric and, and all expectations that Montiel and her crew at the Planning Commission worked diligently to make sure that the city is being represented through the code of ordinances to make sure these things don't fall through the cracks and they're in addition to the community. I think this is, in my mind, this is a no-brainer as a triplex. I mean, if you, I mean, behind the scenes, if you decided, oh, yeah, we know Sally, and Sally's a terrible person, and so you could do whatever to try to mitigate that. But to me, there's no difference between a duplex and a triplex. If she has enough parking and the building is set for it. Mr. Gilmet already talked about the limited number of people per se that would be because of the way it's laid out. One-bedroom, single person, another, single person. It, I mean, it's all, seems like a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, no more public comment. Back to council, discussion.
My, my main thing is that it was designed as a triplex. It was set up as a triplex in the past. So it's one thing if you want to turn a one-person house into a triplex, that's just way too much division, or even a duplex could be. So since this was a triplex in the past, I would be going along for that.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Is that for all three of you, or each individual?
No.
One West Oldfield, the first one.
One at West Oldfield. So I would make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty-five-five-oh-five to the city ordinance of Alpena zoning map.
Second.
So we have a motion to amend the ordinance twenty-five-dash-five-oh-five, which is amend the city, Alpena zoning map. Mayor John Mitchell, supported by Carrier. Any discussion?
Do like how Kelly addressed everything and is looking to address and well-maintain the area. So I was on the fence, still kind of am, in regards to the parking and just having enough space for, you know, three potential couples, single people. I, I still am not entirely decided.
I'm the same, I'm not decided. Because I can see, I live in a neighborhood right now where there's a fourplex, and yeah, that's not a triplex, but there are an awful lot of cars that come and go, and the parking is just, I don't know, I'm, I'm like you, which I'm completely on the fence now, particularly when it comes to the neighbors.
There's no more discussion, then we can take the roll.
Councilmember Carrier?
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Um, nay.
Mayor Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Walchuk?
Nay.
Motion fails.
So I will make a motion to refer this back to planning commission. If they want to consider R2 duplex, right, R2? They can't. So that's my motion.
Second.
So a motion by Johnson, second by Mayor Proton to send us back to planning commission for consideration for duplex. Any discussion?
First field motion. First field motion on council, yes.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Walchuk?
Hi.
And Councilmember Carrier? Motion carried.
Bill?
This is ordinance number twenty-five-dash-five-oh-six. Once again, with council policy, this will not be rewritten unless one of the individual members wishes for it to be rewritten. This is property at two-twenty-six West Miller with a conditional rezonement from R2 to RT to allow for the use of the property as a duplex.
So I'm going to open up public comment. Two-twenty-six West Miller. Any public comment? So I'm going to close public comment. Any comments from council?
The, the oven, this is the oven issue which has been solved. Okay, indeed. All right.
So there's no.
It was spoken that, is, is there a plan to make anything definitive for duplexes having a stove in that checklist? I know it was talked about, but I don't know if it was actually said that there will be something created for that.
Montiel addressed that.
Yeah, Montiel's.
Okay, thank you.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approved, sorry, I'm looking for the ordinance twenty-five-dash-five-oh-six to approve a conditional rezonement for two-two-six West Miller from R2, single-family residential to R2, two-family residential. Okay. And do I need to read the rest of that statement? The statement of conditions is as follows. Convert single-family residents to duplex.
Support?
Second.
Okay, so. Mayor Proton, make a motion, support.
Motion to approve the ordinance, Carrier, dash, five-oh-six to the city of Alpena zoning map.
That's motion.
I agreed to wrong motion.
I think so.
Oh, okay.
They're all the same.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at ordinance twenty-five-five-oh-six as it relates to two-two-six-six West Miller.
It's just a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five-dash-five-oh-six to amend the city of Alpena zoning map. It's not your.
Yes, it is.
Kevin, are you supporting that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No. Anna take the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Walchuk?
Hi.
Councilmember Carrier?
Hi.
And Councilmember Hollinshead?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Bill?
This is ordinance number twenty-five-dash-five-oh-seven. And this is the parcel located at two-oh-eighth, excuse me, two-oh-eight North Eighth Avenue. And this is for the conditional rezonement from WD to R2 to allow for the legal use of the property as a residential human care. So specifically, for the emergency shelter of survivors of domestic and sexual violence.
So I'm going to open public comment at two-oh-eight North Eighth Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Valerie. I'm the executive director at Hope Shores. Thank you for having this final meeting to make this decision. I just want to speak on a couple of points. I want to be mindful of your time as well. I've been up here already twice in front of different groups. There were some concerns brought up at the last meeting. I'm hoping that if there are lingering questions, you know that I'm here tonight to answer questions before you do make a decision. I did hear Montiel share, when she was kind of giving the brief overview, that some questions were asked by the community about our current facility, and some information was sought. We did supply information on that from neighbors, letters in support of our current facility, saying that we're quiet, respectful, zero events that ever bothered them or woke them up. The law enforcement report was supplied as well to the planning commission. I'm not sure if that was forwarded on to this group, but the historic history from that address is available. And just a reminder again that we've been in the community for forty-seven years with an emergency shelter, supporting survivors of domestic and sexual violence about six blocks away from where we're asking for the rezoning. So not a huge upset in the community that we see other than moving to a different building that's a lot more accessible and available to survivors that we work with. And in fact, the occupancy will remain the same at the twenty-five-person limit within the city, and we rarely get to that number. We never have in my history, in fact. I don't really have anything else to share, except I am here to answer your questions. Also, anybody in the community, I'm reachable at Hope Shores Alliance. If anybody wants to chat, I, I would love to try to work this out.
Do go.
Hi, good to see you. Gillian Ferguson, Hope Shores Alliance, and I'm our support services coordinator over there. Just to reiterate, I also want to honor and respect your time, but we have peacefully coexisted with the current neighborhood for our entire time there. The letter that was submitted at the planning commission meeting was from a family who's literally like, if they looked out their back window, would be in our backyard, very, very close to our current shelter. And they have young children, young babies, and have reported no issues with our shelter being there, and that's with the same capacity that we're asking for here. In terms of the call log to law enforcement, just want to reiterate that calls have decreased by sixty percent in the last ten years, and we're talking like one or two calls per year to law enforcement. So very limited, yeah.
Is it what kind of calls?
Uh, yeah, most of them, I think we have a write-up form, but most of them are like nonviolent calls. Like, I think only five percent in the entire history since nineteen fifty-one were of like a violent or suspicious nature. The rest was like, one was like for a dog being lost. Another was like a wellness check.
Is it six, seventy-three in general around Alpena?
No, at our shelter, yes. Yeah, yeah, no. Uh, yes, I agree. We're, we're focusing a lot on handling, we focus a lot on handling issues internally, and we find, again, that most of these folks are fleeing violence and are not wanting to be in violent situations. And so a lot of things are just mediation inside the house and handled privately. But most of the calls have just been wellness checks or, um, like, there's some, what's that?
It's a quick order, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I think it was included, if you wanted to see specifics, included in the original packet. But, yeah, only five percent were for violent instances. So suspicious situation, welfare, child, citizen counseling, suicidal ideations, things like that, concerns about child abuse and neglect.
They're all coming from calls inside the house.
Yes. Which, again, I think reiterates our, like, responsibility regarding handling situations. And most of them have been assistive calls with law enforcement, and so come and assist with the situation, not to remove somebody from their premises or because of violence happening within the house.
I know you did have the police report, but I was wondering just as well here, if there had been any external incidents? I know the family across the street has not experienced anything, but to kind of speak to people who've had issues, if there had been any external incidents.
That's a really great question. From my personal knowledge, no, the report doesn't specify who makes the call. Just the reporting officer. So if you want, do you want this? But as far as I know, like, I've been there for six and a half years, and I don't think anyone's called about the shelter in that time. I don't know if from Alpena police.
That report is just specific to the head office. It doesn't specify whether it was from outside the residence. The recording system doesn't break that.
Okay. If the entity they're calling about was an external or inside the house. Okay.
It doesn't, you have to go into each report to be able to see who was from, you know, external.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, the building that we're looking to move into was originally built for communal living. It would require a significant renovation to make it into anything else. It was also previously zoned, what we're asking it to return to. So just wanted to reiterate that. I don't even know what it could be renovated into, the way it's set up, because it is bedroom, bedroom, jack and chill, just, it's ideal for communal living. And we do have plans to invest in the property and make it as beautiful as the area that it's in. We want to honor the location and the river and the beauty, the beauty of that area. And so we do have plans to continue to invest in the property and keep it up. Most of the complaints that I've heard the last two meetings that I've come to have been about other shelters and concerns with the residents there. I've not actually heard anything about concerns with the residents in our shelter beyond some misinformation about abusers coming into the property, which historically speaking, is not the case. We heard from a criminalologist last time who said that most of the time, abusers aren't showing up. And we find that to be true. A lot of this is happening behind closed doors. They don't want to put themselves in a situation where they would be held accountable for their actions. And so they, we don't have a lot of abusers showing up to our property. Beyond that, I think that's everything I have for today. Do you have any more questions, or?
Okay.
For answering any questions that you may have.
Me again. Kevin Ginter. Now, once again, I think someone had made a comment at the first reading about, oh, this happened? I mean, things happen all over the city, but we don't run the, we don't run the approvals by, like, what happened a year ago or five years ago, or if it's a trend, I guess you address it in different ways. Sounds like between tonight's information and the first reading, that a lot of bases were covered. Doesn't look like it's any different than the original location. Talked about up to twenty-five people. If that's an issue, I, I think it's, you know, back to the ordinance in some fashion so that people don't come to you thinking, oh, this is a possibility, when in fact, it's not going to happen because people don't want to encourage this type of facility. It answers a lot of questions, takes care of a lot of people. The county prosecutor talked about the proponents or the benefits of this in the community. So to me, it didn't work the last time. See it as another no-brainer for, and I'm not all about, you know, let's do, let's drop everything, and we need housing. Let's, let's throw away the book and let everything just go helter-skelter. No, I think these, these proposals are well-merited, and people are invested in the community. You got the people from the facility that are going, hey. At some level, I suppose you have to believe them in addition to using the ordinance as the backbone for your legislation. Thank you.
Yes, quickly, I would support that rezoning back to the RM. I work as a volunteer in their present facility, and the new layout would be much more conducive to a family life. So that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just have a very brief public comment. This is an agency that's very dear to my heart. My name is Sarah Lane. I am a board member for Hope Shores Alliance. I'm here to advocate for the rezoning of the property on Eighth Avenue. It's planned to become the new Hope Shores Alliance Shelter. I've been a board member for only a short amount of time since about December, but I have witnessed firsthand the determination and dedication of the staff to the mission of the organization. They have worked tirelessly to prepare for this transition to a new shelter, and they have always kept the best interest of survivors and of the community as the highest priority. This new building would be a significant addition to Hope Shores to allow that continued work of supporting survivors. Hope Shores is a vital organization to our area. They provide services to all members of the community when needed, and everyone is welcome regardless of different backgrounds that people may come from. Hope Shores believes in communities where all have the right to be safe from stalking, sexual assault, domestic violence, and dating violence, and this new shelter would provide that. It's much more modern and accommodating than the current shelter. It would create a safe place for survivors and for staff. And so I'm asking you to please vote yes to rezone the property. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cynthia Mieschinsky. I'm European County Prosecutor, also a City of Alpena resident. And I just wanted to voice my support along with the letter of support that came in the original packet for this particular project. I know that there was some opposition stated at different meetings, and perhaps will be stated after, you know, we have our chance up here. But I would really like all of you to pay close attention to those police reports or the data which was collected regarding those, to judge for yourselves exactly how this particular shelter here in our town operates and keeps its residents safe. And I think that then expounds out to the neighborhood as well. I also just want to note that when we're able to support this particular section of our population, which is a lot more than any of us will ever realize, right, as most abuse like this takes place in the home, out of our eyesight, until someone's ready and strong enough to come forward and come to a place such as this. And then they're in these homes, and we don't see them. They are not in the public spotlight. So while, you know, some of us can support them in different ways, this is a way for this community to say, we support you, because you are a major part of our population. We may not know your face, we may not know you by name, but we support you. And so I just ask that you do vote in favor of the conditional rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jackie Gonzalez. I've owned my home for 29 years on River Street. And throughout that time, we had our fair share of issues with having a group-type home along five residents' backyard, alarms that are going off, residents that were wandering around, knocking on doors, coming onto your property. We had a resident that got into a transport ban and struck their coworker, their direct care worker, excuse me. And I never really thought, especially right there on a very busy place like the bike path, that it was a very good location for something like that. And I don't really think it's an appropriate place for a shelter either, because these types of homes do not belong in a residential neighborhood. Our area is getting pummeled with it. If we go two blocks one way, we have Sunrise Mission. We go two blocks the other way, we have St. Bernard's. Go another two blocks, and we have River View Apartments. And now we have a shelter. And we all know, we watched it on Chisholm Street, literally, domestic disturbance calls, police presence, it's there. One of my biggest concerns is, while I worked for Alpena Public Schools, I worked with many students that were involved with shelter. And every single one of those students that I worked with, the mom that brought these kids here told the father where they were, and then the violence began. There was domestic disturbance. I've had it within my own family, and they can become explosive and violent quickly. And ours ended in homicide and suicide in a residential neighborhood. In our small area with all of these missions and low-income apartments, I don't think this area and our property value deserves to have yet another one. Literally, three shelters would be just in our area. We have the issue of Sunrise Mission, that they can't stay there all day, so they flood our streets, they hang around all over the island, hammocks are set up where they're sleeping, and the police do not come. I've called the police for them being highly intoxicated, rolling around, crawling, can't get up. Yet, we know who you're talking about, but nobody ever comes. I don't, I don't like hearing that we can have up to 25, but that'll never happen. 25 people every 40, 43 days, I believe they told me, is what can happen. They can, I'm not saying it will, but it could happen. And all we keep hearing about is this is their once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to obtain this property. Well, your five neighbors at 625, 631, 617, 635, and 621, we are all single women, and this was our one-in-a-lifetime opportunity to buy our homes and live in a residential area, not an area that is filled with shelters and missions and low-income apartments. So I would also like to submit a letter that, from one of my neighbors, that is too ill to be here, but it feels the same way, that with the housing shortage that you have in this area, being on prime waterfront with all these ships that are coming in and the tourists that are there, I think it is not the best place that we put yet another shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
I ask her address. Is that appropriate? Her address?
Hey, Jackie. Call me your address.
625, Regent.
625, thank you.
What do you think, Angie?
Hi. Listen to my voice. Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. And I will add to the other two addresses on the other side, the other, on the other side of the park, Rosnoski's and Lamar's also are not interested in the least having them as neighbors. As I stated before, I have many concerns with our safety. They will endanger our neighborhood. It will attract the angry men, and the seven direct neighbors do not want the danger brought literally in our backyards for permanent danger to exist for us. How many employees are on the premises 24/7? I would like that answered, to take care of the 25 people that get to stay for up to 43 days. Who is already working on that place? This is in the process of being purchased. There's already been people in and out of there working. They just came in and plowed again. The roof has a tarp on it. There have been people in working, people coming and going. Is this already a done deal that they assume? Who's been able to come and go freely in there? There's been a lot of people. It seems very, something's not above board. And I'd like to know, who owns it now? Is it the federal government that's selling it? Lori's not here. I don't see her here tonight. One of the problems that I talked about before, the discussion of a light, there already is a large pole with a light facing that property. Is that going to be sufficient, or are they having more light? And if there is more light, I don't want any, that light has been acceptable to me. I don't want any more lights facing my property. If they are, if you are proceeding with allowing the women's shelter, I propose a higher addition for my back and side fence paid for by them, and for my safety to be allowed in and out to build it up. I would have builders get a quote and have the builders come in and take care of that ASAP. Also, a security system for us neighbors that they pay for, because our property is going to be jeopardized, that only we have access to for our own privacy and safety. In discussion, referring to records of incidents, it speaks for itself for the direct dangers for us. This report I did just receive, she had emailed it to me, but I can't get emails. This is very disturbing. So we go through, and on this list that you were given, assist area agency, suspicious situation, personnel vehicle, threats and harassment, unwanted person, suicidal person, custody dispute, arson. Arson, that we need that? Trespassing, fraud, escape and flight. Then we enumerate individually on the list. I believe you have already been given this. Overdose, harassment complaint, suspicion, suspicious situations, larceny. Are they going to start stealing from our neighborhood too now? Suicidal subject, children neglect, welfare check, harassment, suspicious vehicles, civil standby, unwanted person, assault, unwanted person. It goes on and on. It is very disturbing to think that we don't matter enough. All, several suspicious persons, and recently, that young gal just died at their home, overdose of drugs. And there's too much negativity. There's, there doesn't seem to be the, that they can allow, that they will attempt to check for guns, knives, drugs, and alcohol. And that really bothers me. Like, for example, these other places today, three policemen at St. Bernard's School. This is drawing trouble in and drawing people in that are trouble. We already have the homeless shelter, they expanded, and at St. Bernard's. And it's bringing in people from far away that we don't need. This women's shelter belongs out in the country, not in our backyards. We are giving you many reasons not to vote this in place, and you seem, many of you seem to think that it's just great, but it's not in anybody's backyards but ours. I'm very aware of how all of these votes go. I attend all the meetings. I'm very concerned that this was green-lighted from day one, and I'm asking that you please vote no. If not, we must not matter as neighbors. Neighbors that don't want it matter about the rentals. Do we matter? And that was in your words. We've discussed this many times. I'm begging you to vote no and keep them out of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or anyone want to respond to some of the concerns that Angie brought up?
I didn't write them down, but I'll try to.
Couple of them.
So first of all, I just want to say, it is sad to hear this, because I have made myself available to answer questions. I will continue to make myself available to answer questions. I have not gotten any direct communication, and I also want to, I guess, point out that in order to even get in front of you today and two weeks ago, we had to go through quite a long process with Planning Commission, as you all know, but I just want everyone to know that. And in doing that, we had to fill out a lot of information. It is all available online. And then I think Montiel even offered to give people copies. So there are roughly 60-some pages of materials that are available. Additionally, when we did go through that process, we spoke about some of the concerns that have been brought up. And the capacity, again, 25 people, we have beds for 25 people. There are roughly eight bedrooms that will have beds in them. We're talking bunk beds, that's two people, right? One bunk bed is two people. A parent and a full-size bed, that's three people. Four people per room probably is what we're housed for, what we have space for. I cannot stress this enough. We do not intermingle families or people. We could have six single people come in, and our house is full. That is full, as far as we're concerned. Last year, we had 44 adults all year long in our facility. So we have capacity for 25, but we do not, we can't, there's no way we could have 25 people in our house unless the perfect number of parents showed up with four children each or three children each. That's not going to happen. It's never happened. The law enforcement report, some of the things she was rattling off without dates were from 1991, 1990, 1993. We had one incident so far in 2025, and yes, it was the most unfortunate incident I've ever experienced in my life, that on my watch, hopefully will never happen again. And we are doing everything we can internally to make sure that that is true. In 2024, we had two calls. In 2023, we had two or three calls. We are, as Gillian said, reducing the number of calls to law enforcement, because we have security systems, we have good relationships with law enforcement, we do better checks when we're staffed 24/7. So to answer that question, during the day, between 7:00 AM and roughly 7:00 PM, we have anywhere from four to two people on staff at the same time, including volunteers who are assisting as well. Then at night, which roughly would be the hours from 10:00, 11:00 PM at night until 7:00 in the morning, one person with direct link to a supervisor, a 24/7 support person. We operate a 24/7 emergency response, so we always have one to two people on call to respond to hospitals or law enforcement agencies in a five-county area. So we cover that pretty well with multiple people on call. So they have people at their disposable disposal if something comes up and they need support. I don't remember what any of the other questions were.
Wants to know who owns it, construct a security system.
There's been a tarp on the roof since we first looked at it, because there is a roof leak, and that was a concern that we had. We officially now own the building, and we can own the building, even if it's zoned waterfront district, because anybody is allowed to buy a building in the city of Alpena. We did not use federal dollars to buy that, so the federal government does not own it. We own it. We took out a mortgage, and if we are not able to have it rezoned, we have a Plan B. And the roof, people that have been there and the plowing that has been happening, we need to get mail still. There were people living in that home up until a month ago when we purchased the home, and they still get mail. They have to be able to get that mail to their families, so that's the number-one reason it's plowed. The roofer is now there because he's getting ready to fix the roof. It's a pretty big roofing project, so that will be taking place. The paperwork that was submitted, that's what I wanted to mention, we had to submit that back in, it was like late December, early January, to get in front of Planning Commission. You've had the same packet of materials going from that date through to all these meetings. So a lot has happened in the background in terms of ownership and things like that. But no, this has not been something that's been in the bag. It's something we've been looking at, thinking about, and working on. And yes, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for survivors of domestic and sexual violence in this five-county area, absolutely. We've been working on it since last May, looking at buildings, talking about where we could have a facility that's accessible to survivors.
For the 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, the two on-call responders, are they close? Because it seems like the people that are left inside the house are just victims of the families at that point from...
We have someone on staff. So we do have someone in the house. So one person is in the house, yep. We also have a security system, and then we have staff who are on call outside of the facility. So they're on call to support with 24/7 operations, if that's the emergency response I was talking about, or if support is needed at the shelter.
Is a support person inside?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And just kind of to talk directly to that, the concerns of the surrounding area?
Yeah.
And the people, do you, do you understand where they're coming from? Do you have any...
I do. Absolutely. I'm, you know, especially when I hear about property value, that's a concern that a lot of people have. I, one thing I don't quite understand is the comparison of our facility that has been six blocks away for 47 years with zero issues, like literally, we don't kick people out during the day, we don't have people roaming the streets, we don't have drugs, we don't have violence. We're being lumped in with another group of people, and that's really unfortunate for them as well as us, because I don't want the focus to be on people who are homeless. That's also a whole other problem that we have in our community, and those people also deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. But I do understand where they're coming from. Hearing the word "shelter" is, is sort of jarring to hear that that's going to be in their backyard. But I cannot stress enough, the people in our neighborhood now barely even know we're there, let alone, I know that the idea a couple of meetings ago was that we were giving misinformation by saying people don't know where we are. I can't stress that enough. People literally tell us they have no idea where we are. Maybe they put it out of their mind once they hear, I don't know. It's not a fun topic to think about. I find a lot of times, I'll meet someone, tell them where we work, and then they don't remember us three months later. Maybe that's the deal. But I do, I do understand where they're coming from. In fact, I've expressed multiple times that I'd be willing to sit down and talk with them, but I have not heard from them. And I'm not going to, you know, cross that boundary and be the one to reach out, but...
Thank you. And then as far as the one I heard with the lights, is there any more need for lights in the area?
So in our parking plan, I think might be what they're referring to, we talk about the parking... We talk about the parking area that will be finished over by the fence by the park. And initially in the site plan, we said we would, we would like a light for safety. I'm open to talking about that. If that's not ideal for residents, you know, we can look at some other option for safety over there, whether it's like a motion camera or something, just to make sure that people as they're coming and going, we can see what's happening and maybe watch people's cars. Right now, our shelter is set up with a camera system so we can watch multiple angles of what's happening in our parking lot, at our back gate, just to make sure it's safe. And some of those calls, I remember one of them when she was rattling it off was, one of our staff had called me, somebody was driving around the block and where we're located now, it is on a city block, so it's pretty busy, but the same car kept going around and around and around. It ended up being completely unrelated to us, but that was a call, like you had said, from inside the house where we're concerned suspicious person. So, yeah.
And as far as the lights go, you have flexibility there. Do you also have flexibility within fencing?
Um, we are, I don't know how to answer that because I didn't quite understand how it was stated, but yes, we are willing to talk about fencing. I don't know that we can buy fencing for all the neighbors and security systems, but I think that we can talk about fencing.
As far as your own fencing goes on your own property, yeah.
Yeah, we are, we have a plan for a fence. It's in our, our plan for a six foot privacy fence. That's as tall as I think we could go.
And then flexible and we can talk about.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to, for safety of the children, right? Especially with the river, we want to be able to enclose the backyard and also, you know. So that's the plan of the fence is it connects back to the house. And then it's been requested that we put up or we want to put up like a privacy fence along the fence to divide the park from our shelter and add additional privacy. So, but yeah, we have to get permits for like the fence. So that will come, you know, here and we have to get a permit for that so that we approve. But it's mostly just about safety of the residents and children, that they have a safe place to play in the backyard. That's our goal defense. And a six feet is a, we would go, you know, higher, but I think six feet is all we're allowed.
Lighting ordinance is like, they could fill their parking lot with lights if they wanted to, but they just can't go off into the neighbor's yard. So, you know, that's, that's in our ordinance. You can't put up lights that are going to shoot. They have to be directed to the parking lot. So if they need more for safety, it's only to light up their parking lot.
And like I said, I think I said this last time, is I haven't been out there at night, but if it's lit well enough, then we don't need to put in, I mean, that's more money anyway, right? So we're nonprofit, we try to make things budget friendly. But yeah, if we don't need more lights, we wouldn't put in more necessarily.
It's something you'd be willing to talk about.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, and that's, you know, I wanted to kind of reiterate that is like, to answer your question, I 100% understand where people are coming from. And it does, it, like, I didn't expect opposition when we talked about this because we have, we've experienced so much support from the city of Alpena and I, I respect where they're coming from it, but it does make me sad that when we get, if we get in there, when we, whatever ends up working out tonight, that our neighbors aren't going to want these folks in their community. That concerns me for survivors, right? About the treatment from the neighborhood, of course, but I hope that they'll come around and sit down and have a conversation with us because these, this could easily be me or anybody in this room. They are our friends, our neighbors, our family. Like statistically, everybody knows a survivor if we're not one ourselves. So I would hope that there'd be eventual support from the neighborhood as we get, if we get in there and it's calm and build some trust over time with the neighbors.
And I would just, if I could.
Get the question answered. What is plan B?
Um, I can't talk about that right now.
Okay. And I would just like to make a comment on behalf of the city.
It'd be within the zoning.
This, there at no point was this green lighted. I did not even see the plans for this until it came to planning commissioner and I was sitting in that room or was online. And then it came to us. I have not had a discussion with anyone, with the exception of Montiel and any discussions that I have had public. So to say that it was green lighted, it's not, it's, it's just not fair to city or city staff because.
I appreciate that response.
And plan B, you can't discuss.
More than likely, we'd have to sell it. So it'd have to, you know, stay within the zoning ordinance, which is waterfront district. There's a chart available. Again, it's online and that's probably the use that it would be used for. Yep, thanks.
I just want to clarify something real quick if I could. So as a reminder, we're two blocks away from this proposed facility. And I just want to clarify, there were some comments made tonight that there's calls for service that we're not responding to. I don't know what specific calls we're talking about, but we respond to all calls for service. And if we get called, we go. So I would be happy to address any of those concerns, but to the best of my knowledge, that's just not true.
I know.
Yeah.
And thank you for.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Steen, Associate Director of Hope Shore Alliance. I just want to bring back the excitement for the building, for our new shelter and for the opportunity for survivors to be seen in a different light. Being new to the organization, a little over a year, I've saw nothing from leadership and board and staff, volunteers and community partners for support and connection and working to bring things to a better place for, for each other, mainly the survivors at hand. The first time, there were people in the building, the first time I had an opportunity to see the building, honestly, I stopped in the three steps into the building, the ceilings are so tall. It is like a whole new world for people. It's not dark, it's not, it's not low ceilings. It's honestly a breath of fresh air. And that was what I saw and that is what I thought I shared with the planning commission. And I continue to, to see that and envision that and just for people to feel different and have a lighter experience while they're with us and moving them through their journey. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate your support. I appreciate the comments and the communication. So I just felt I should share my excitement as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Ellie. I'm a social work student. I just came here for assignment, I'll be honest, when I was hearing about this. And I am really passionate about Hope Shores. I currently work for community mental health. So I work with a lot of people and we coordinate a lot with them. So I'm very happy to hear about all of this and I think it's an exciting opportunity. And I think what I'm hearing the most from the opposition is that safety concerns. And what I would like to argue is that we're also trying to accommodate for the safety of women that are being hurt and assaulted in our area. So I think it's important to acknowledge that I completely understand that it's in your backyards and that's really scary. You obviously, if you have children, if it's your family, you really want to, you focus on them, you know, that's, those are your babies. That's what you want to focus on. But there is also other people in the area that is something to consider. And it's really, it's for the women that were brave enough to go out and put themselves in a shelter in a safer place. And really this could be happening in your own backyard too. You just don't know that because it's all within inside the house. So it's hard to see that, okay, a shelter is coming in, so now there's going to be violence in our backyard. It could already be there. You're just not knowing of it yet. So I think that's all to consider and I don't know the phrases, but I'd like to hear you all say aye for this.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, so I'm going to close public comment and we'll move on to council discussion.
So I have spoken to multiple people with little to no context and asked them if they knew where the current women's shelter was and nobody got it right. So the fact that nobody knows or a majority of the people don't know where it is, I think that goes to show how safe it is for these women trying to move on and improve their The data, the letters that we've received from the prosecutor, from the police, I, I am really a data driven person, so I really appreciate that we have that information and that there are few incidences that happen. And when they do happen, they are very unfortunate, but we do need to take care of our people as a community. And this is a really great way to take care of people who, you know, we may not know be experiencing violence, but they're able to get out of it. So I really appreciate what you guys are doing.
I, I understand where the opposition is coming from, especially when we previously spoke about the possibility of cars in a driveway. Now we're talking about the possibility of something possibly more nefarious that could happen. So I understand it absolutely. The possibility, you know, opens up because it's something new. It's something that hasn't been there before. But on that same side, I, we can't live with what ifs and it seems like every question is answered. And if it's not a definitive answer, it can be worked upon with the local community. I, I too have questions on how it, it may end up, but that, that's the nature of the business. You always wonder how this will improve, how it will get better. You hope it won't get worse, just like any other part of the community. So I, I do like, like the residents in the area who spoke against it. I do have some reservations, but on the whole, it's, it's a beautiful opportunity for the community at large. And that's why I'm on the fence for the community that is right next to them, that's right next to them.
I, I said my piece last week. I would say at this point in my life, I'm a survivor twice of domestic abuse, my, my childhood home and a relationship I had when I was older. And it's a dirty little secret. And had I known that there was a place for me to go and escape from what I was going through, broken fingers, cracked neck, I mean horrible, horrific abuse, all during the time when I was Miss Alpena. And I think to say to this population, we don't know who you are. We don't know because it is, it's the underbelly and it could be anywhere. And I'm confessing a lot publicly here, so I would like you to know this is not the easiest thing I've ever talked about, but it's horrific. And I think if my mom had known what was going on, she might've been able to take her nine children and go someplace else. I can't say enough about the work that these women do or these people do, and I can't say enough in support. You have my, you have my deepest, deepest appreciation and I will vote yes for this.
I, I'm hoping that if Hope Shore Alliance does get this program here, that they work with their immediate neighbors to try to allay the fears they have concerning this facility. They're afraid of it, but one, they're alone. They are afraid of it. So I believe that there should be a working relationship between the neighborhood there for that. I, I believe in the idea of the fencing between so they can have some degree of separation. I don't believe there should be gates between those. Okay, so that they have that. I believe that there should be alarm systems on the windows and the doors of the facility. Believe there should be cameras and infrared cameras so that you can see before that, that the police can be called pretty much immediately if you've got some suspicious person moving around out there. If these things are happening like this, it may drive whomever out of the neighborhood like this. But you got to, you really do need to work because of this to convince them of this and how you could be good neighbors together and watch out for each other. And so I think that's really what I would like to see happening if it comes about is that you, before occupancy, because personally whoever's in there is private to the community as far as I'm concerned. Okay. But before you open up, if you said, if they were invited over to go through and say, what are your most intense concerns in this situation? Have we helped at least reduce or eliminate some of these concerns out there? So they're living it because of their community. Okay, so really have to work their because.
And I am of the opinion that we have to take care of our citizens. If they need help, we have to help them. They are worthy. Everyone has a value and to label them is not right. I will say to the neighborhood, I understand your concerns, but I think that I'd like you to come back if we approve this in six months, all of you, and tell us how things are going, how are things going? Are there any incidents or it's going wonderful or we're working together or we have this button or that button? We would like to hear that. But I will vote yes for this. I cannot see women, children, and sometimes men with no place to go. They didn't do this. They need our help. So that's where I will vote. So I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to motion to approve ordinance 25-507 to amend the city of Alpena zoning map from WD to RM2 for the use of a residential human care facility.
Second, so Collins has made the motion, Mayor Proten supported it and the motion is, and excuse me, I have a headache, is to adopt ordinance number 25-507, which amends the city of Alpena zoning map to change the parcel at 208 North. I know she didn't say that from our, from waterfront district to RM2.
I didn't, I didn't say.
Any discussion?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Walchek?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Howeshead?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Okay. Now we're going to move on to council committee reports D. Danny, do you want to say?
As they said at NIMCOG, they are not sure they'd really like to hear from. Last week was my first meeting with the local emergency planning, first responders and nine elevens like this. And, and it was quite eye opening. I did have to leave NIMCOG early because they get out normally at one, at 12 o'clock and this meeting was at one o'clock. As good as I am, I'm afraid they wouldn't like me flying that low coming across here. So I did get out of there earlier. It was a situation of where you open your eyes, you're shut your mouth and listen and learn what's going on there. And it's a great team there. I do know some of the people that are over there, so that's quite well for them there. See, I was welcomed to the team, accommodations were made and they're going to have them at 1:30 now, so I have a chat to get back there. That's very nice of them to be able to do that. They had presentations from at NIMCOG from the MSU extension office, which I really didn't know they did all the stuff that they did. That says, well, then I'm going to have to be accustomed viser over at your office at the Fairgrounds just to see what else we can involve the community in or the city in or whatever like this. So, and it was, it was a very good presentation from them. That's one of the good things to have at NIMCOG. We had our elections of officers and yes, I'm still on the finance committee, so that's, that's well done there. And then there was appointments to the board. Finally, I submitted a letter from, I forgot all names, the land bank authority chairperson, the new Charlie Cindy Sebula, that's her. Anyway, has sent a budget request to the city to, along with funds from other partners to move forward with projects to eliminate blight and developed properties. So I gave a copy of the letter to Rachel and we'll hear more about that. As a matter of fact, there is a closing the middle of March, I believe it is, on the three Bedford properties. And I'm ready to see dirt fly and hoodies go down like this for those properties. And I'm ready to see dirt fly and hoodies go down like this for those properties.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Still wait, Hunt is up top.
I have nothing to report.
Um, other than a conversation with Tim regarding the arts, it was just a lovely conversation about the statues and what they want to do over the next couple of years. Um, nothing really concrete at this time, um, aside from the relocation of the statue that's at Cogan Plaza currently to keep that. You're like. Yes, for both, yes. Yep. So we just had like a little discussion about that, but nothing concrete, nothing.
It doesn't go into the new.
Propose, yes.
So if it, we can't fit it there, we will find another perfect spot.
Yeah, for sure.
Great information. So I just want to um, do a, a brief update on recycling. Um, as, as everyone may have read in the, or read or heard in the news that um, the commissioners have made a motion to remove the bins from Northern Lights Arena um, within ninety days. Sometimes these things get out in the press, um, when they have no idea. You know, people talk. So um, we had a small group conversation with all the interested parties. Um, me, Rachel, executive director, people from NLA, um, commissioners, um, and we had a conversation. Uh, we will have ongoing conversations. The problem with um, the bins where they are and part of the parking lot at Northern Lights is it, it has a deep restriction on it, um, that that property has to be used for soccer. So um, we're going to try to go to Besser Company, the county is working on this. Go to Besser Company and see if um, they can lift that restriction or give permission um, for Northern Lights to use the rest of that parking lot and for the bins to stay. Um, that being said, we are, in case the bins cannot stay, um, we are looking for another spot to put all eight bins. It would have to be, um, and our glass bin, because our glass bins come this week. We won't start glass recycling this week, but it's coming. Um, so we, if anyone knows of a site or knows of anyone who has a site, um, that, that it has to be relatively large, like Northern Lights, because the trucks have to get in, hook up the bins, put them on, be able to drive out. Um, and then the same when they drop them off. Um, so there's that. Um, we will be going to commissioners on March eleventh to ask for their support um, um, for recycling. We need them to pledge their full faith and credit so that um, the authority can issue bonds. Uh, so we, we have sent over the material. Um, we will be doing a presentation. So if there's anyone out there that um, enjoys recycling um, and supports what we do, um, please let your commissioner know um, that it's important for our community or send me the letter and I'll make sure that it gets to them. Uh, because it's important. Um, but uh, outside of that, if you, anyone has questions out there in here, um, I'm always happy to answer them or talk about recycling. So that being said, that's all I have. Okay.
A wagering?
Well, motion made by Mitchell to adjourn.
Second.